Good morning, everyone. So, as the fire alarm indicates, it's ten o'clock, which is the time that our meeting starts. And welcome, everybody. Thank you all for joining us at the Homes and Housing Delivery Committee meeting this morning. I particularly want to welcome those in the public gallery. Thank you so much for coming and joining us, giving up your mornings to participate in the democratic process. That's greatly appreciated. I'm going to begin by asking members of the committee to introduce themselves. So first of all, my name's Barry Parsons. I'm a councillor for Easton, and I'm chair of this committee. And I'll go to Richard.
Councillor Richard Daddie. Uh, councillor, I'll stay at a McGraby from Vale Wood.
Okay, so Jost Hart, Wislington, West Libden. Thank you.
Councillor Shabalan of Central.
And councillor Lisa Stane of Mill Hill.
Thank you, everyone. And I'll ask officers to introduce themselves as and when they present a report or speak. So, first things first, let's get some housekeeping done. In the event of the fire alarm sounding again, it won't be a test this time. So please leave the room calmly, exit via the lobby area and the main front door of City Hall, then turn right, walk down the ramp towards the cathedral, and the assembly point is in front of the cathedral. Just like to remind committee members that when you are asking questions or making statements, please, please address myself, Chair. And if you have follow-up questions or anything like that, again, please, please address them to me so that I can make sure everyone gets the opportunity to speak. We are, we have a packed agenda today. Future meetings are going to be even more packed, so I'd just like to ask everybody to try and make sure that you keep your points concise as much as possible, so that we can have a, have as full a conversation and debate as possible. Okay. Agenda item two is apologies for absence and substitutions. So we've received apologies from councillor Zoe Pete. Okay. And I understand councillor Paul Goggin is on his way. Are there any further apologies? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Agenda item three then is declarations of interest. I'd like to ask committee members at this point if you have any interest to declare in relation to any of the items of business on today's agenda. Excellent. Thank you very much. So, on to agenda item four, which is the minutes of the previous meeting. So before I move those minutes, we've been informed of an error in the previous meeting's minutes. So on page four of those minutes, supplementary questions which were asked by Nigel Varley have been attributed to Dan Aykroyd, so we'll, we'll get those corrected in the minutes. So bearing that in mind, I'd like to ask first of all if any member of the committee has any, any further amendments to make. So, in that case, I move the minutes of the previous meeting of this committee, held on the twentieth of September twenty twenty four, as correct record. Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much. So may I ask the committee to, if you are content, to confirm those minutes as a correct record to be signed by the Chair? Thank you. Thanks very much. Moving on to agenda item five, is Chair's announcements. So obviously, the big news this week has been the budget. And I'd just like to draw the committee's attention to some of the points that were raised in the budget that are relevant to our committee. So an eighty-six million pound increase was announced to the disabled facilities grant, which the government suggests will support seven thousand eight hundred more adaptations to homes for those with social care needs, which will reduce hospitalisations and prolong independence. The government also committed an initial three-point-four billion pounds towards heat decarbonisation and household energy efficiency over the next three years. This includes one-point-eight billion pounds to support fuel poverty schemes. There was also an announcement that the affordable homes programme will be increased by five hundred million pounds to three-point-one billion. And that will help build up to five thousand additional affordable homes. The Chancellor also announced that the social housing rent settlement will be at CPI plus one percent for the next five years. I understand there'll be a consultation on that, with the potential to extend that to ten years, which would provide more stability for councils who own their own council homes, such as Bristol. The Chancellor also announced an additional one billion pounds of investment next year to remove dangerous cladding. I can see a hand from Jost, but this, this part of the agenda is just for Chair's announcements, so we'll, we'll wait to discuss any of these in future items on the agenda. I wanted to announce that the, the next housing forums will be coming up on the eighteenth and twentieth of November. These are for people who live in our council-owned homes, who are our own tenants or leaseholders. They'll take place online, and these are a place for tenants and leaseholders to discuss issues that are important to them. We've also reopened the homelessness and rough sleeping strategy consultation. It's now open until the twentieth of November. We did that because we recognised that we, that we hadn't received the diversity of responses that we would ideally want in the consultation and the strategy of this nature. So we're, we're reopening that, and we'd really like to encourage people, especially those who have lived experience, and those with delivery services related to homelessness and rough sleeping, to complete that consultation, which can be found on the council's Ask Bristol website. And that's it for Chair's announcements. We're going to go on next to agenda item six, which is public forum. Up to thirty minutes are available for the public forum. Statements, questions and replies, with one exception actually, have been circulated to committee members and published on the website and sent to questioners in advance of this meeting. Each questioner is permitted to ask up to two supplementary questions in total, if you wish. Supplementary questions must arise directly out of the original question or the reply, so entirely fresh questions on other subjects aren't permitted. And depending on the content of the supplementary question, it may be necessary for us to send you a follow-up reply. And thank you, councillor Paul.
Yeah, just, I'll try and be fine, I apologize for being up first class. And have you also had apologies from Zoe?
Yes, yes, we have. Thank you, Paul. And since, since Paul's now here, we, we did do introductions earlier, but, but Paul, would you like to introduce yourself as a member of the committee as well?
Thank you, councillor Paul Goggin, from Withywood Ward.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, five individuals have submitted public forum questions. I'm going to go through them in order before we move on to public statements. So, the first, first two questions were from Joe Banks. Is Joe here? Joe, wonderful. So, so what I'll do with these questions is I will, first of all, I will read out the, the written response that you've already received, and then you'll have the opportunity to, to ask any follow-up questions that you have to. Okay? So, so Joe, your first question was, was on the Housing Management Board. And the, you were asking when the Housing Management Board will be convened again, what its role will be in tackling the deep problems facing social housing in the city. So, so this is the response, you'll already have received this, but I'll read it out for the benefit of the public. So we've, we've decided to pause our current Housing Management Board in light of the new consumer standards and the regulatory judgment we've received. So the, the structure and approach of the Housing Management Board is under review, in line with wider planned review of resident engagement. Board members met with the Chair, that's me, the Homes and Housing Delivery Committee, to discuss ideas and potential options for the way forwards. Proposals on how the Housing Management Board members and housing scrutiny panel will be involved, and influence within the Housing and Consumer Standards Programme are being drafted. They'll be for consultation with, with committee Chair, with senior officers and with residents, amazing, of course. And you had a second question as well. So would you like to ask your follow-ups on the first question? Or would you, would you like me to respond to the second before you ask your two follow-ups?
I'll ask supplementary on the first one.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your response. My question is really looking for the rationale behind pausing the housing management board while this review is going on. Because the Housing Management Board is a unique forum for councillors, officers and residents to discuss issues together. And they haven't met since February. I don't know when this review is supposed to bear fruit. But that's a long period where it hasn't met, and there hasn't been an equivalent forum. So I'll just ask what, what the reasoning is for that pause while the review is going on.
Sure. Yeah, so I might ask officers to, to add to my response. But from my point of view, I think the rationale for that really is that at the moment, we have a number of, of forums for, for residents to, to get involved in decision-making. And the, the particular rationale for the existence of the Housing Management Board really was, was to provide an opportunity for residents and councillors to, to discuss and debate issues around the management of our homes. So it was set up under the previous mayoral system when, when councillors, apart from the cabinet member for, for housing, didn't have a direct say, didn't have direct involvement in management of our council homes. So we're in a new system now, and we have this opportunity actually for councillors to discuss, and also for members of the public, for our residents to come along, for, for leaseholders, for council tenants to come and, and raise issues directly with councillors. So that, this, this forum didn't exist before. So the rationale for the existence of that, of that board, I think, is, has kind of changed quite a lot. And the other thing is that the, the new consumer standards really require us to, to up our game quite considerably in the way that we engage with our residents. And that's going to require a whole new set of structures, we think, with many more opportunities, many different routes for, for residents to get involved. So, so we paused, we paused that board with the, with the agreement of the Members' Board, so that we can, that we can really sort of work out what this new structure's going to look like. Fiona, is there anything you'd like to add?
So, yeah, I'd just like to add, all of that's absolutely correct, but we have got, have ongoing scrutiny taking place. We've got resident scrutiny panels, those are ongoing. We've got the repairs forum, that's ongoing. We've also got leaseholding forums. So I think the, the key has to be, the pause relates to the need to think about ways where we've got greater levels of influence for residents and true influence. So that's what the pause relates to.
And Joe, your second question was about the Housing and Consumer Standards Programme Board.
Can I just come back, can I add two supplementary?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I just come back one on? Yes, you mentioned the housing scrutiny panel. That differs quite fundamentally from the Housing Management Board in its accessibility. It's not webcast in the way the Housing Management Board was. There isn't a public forum, there isn't, you, you have to email tenant participation to get, to get, to get the minutes of meetings. And then they're signed off by the Housing Manager rather than Democratic Services. So is, is, is there, is there going to be a move to, to increase accountability of public participation in that process?
The short answer is yes.
Absolutely.
So the short answer, absolutely, is yes. So for all of the reasons that you've talked about, we need to refresh our approach and think about ways that we can improve both representation and engagement and true influence at a, at a wider level.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I think one thing that I'd add as well, from, again, from my point of view, is that, that that's going to involve, we think, not only opportunities to influence decision-making citywide, but also opportunities at a more local level. So really on the sort of neighbourhood level as well. We know that this is something that, that the regulator expects us to do, and it's also something that our residents expect. Thanks, Joe. So your second question was, was on the Housing and Consumer Standards Programme Board. So this is a, as you say, this is a board which has been formed to oversee our programme in response to the, to the regulatory judgement on our social housing. So you asked which individuals sit on this board. So a list of those individuals has been, has been published and has been sent to you. I, if it's all right, I don't propose sort of reading through the whole list because it's quite, quite substantial. But, but essentially, this is a board that's chaired by the executive director of Growth and Regeneration, and senior, senior leaders and directors within the housing service and beyond sit on that board. And it's got, it's got external representation from Savills, and, and it's got representation, I think importantly, from, from across the council, so not, not just from within the housing service. But one thing that's, that we're very clear about, I think, is that our response to, to that judgement and the, the need to improve our council housing is a, is a whole council response. We all need to be involved and called together. And so I hope that's helpful. I'm going to move on now to question three, which is from Suzanne. So you have two supplementary questions in total, is that right, John?
Yeah.
So, so that was the third one, yeah. Sorry, thanks, Joe. So, so yeah, questions three and four from Suzanne Autry. I don't think I see Suzanne in the room. So, I'm going to move on then to Dan, Dan Aykroyd. Hello, Dan. So again, so you've, you've asked, you've asked three questions, and you have two supplementary questions in total. So what I propose is, is I'll, I'll read out briefly the responses to those questions, and then if you'd like to indicate which of those you'd like to ask supplementary to, is that okay?
Yeah, if you just want to read out the answers first of all first, that'd be a good idea.
Okay, great. Yeah, so, so the, the first question is about section five of the Local Government and Housing Act nineteen eighty-nine. And, and this says that the, the council's been acting unlawfully in respect of fire safety and maintaining housing to an adequate standard. Question is, why is the section five report not being written? So the response to that is that, that a report on our, on our regulatory judgement was brought to this committee in July, following the judgement of the regulator of social housing. It's a, but it's a decision for the monitoring officer rather than for the Homes and Housing Delivery Policy Committee on whether a section five report is required. Do you have a follow-up question to that, Dan?
Yes, I do. I, I've got to think I've got a point of order first, I, because this is not how committees are meant to work. I, as a member of the public, submit questions to this committee. I have no right to just email officers. It is only through the committees and the public can expect answers. Then this committee is meant to pass the question to the relevant officer to answer. It is not acceptable for an answer to not be given. The, the question was on topic for this committee, and it's properly submitted. Politicians are allowed to prevaricate and give elusive answers. Officers, officers are not. As Chair, you need to direct the monitoring officer to give me an honest, a clear answer to the question that I submitted. Otherwise, I believe you're failing in your duty here as Chair. How are you going to get me a proper answer?
Let me just check for some future. So what, so what should, what should the process be then? Okay. Yeah, thanks very much for that, Dan. So what I'm, what I propose to do is that I'm going to, I'm going to get in touch with Tim, or I'm going to ask for him to expand on that response and, and respond to you directly. I understand he's on annual leave at the moment, but, but soon as he gets back, I'll, I'll ask for a response to come to you.
Okay, thank you, that's all. I'll say good for all. I'll reserve one of my supplementary questions for the case response, if you don't mind.
Okay. Thanks very much, Dan.
And then I do have a supplementary question to my question six. But this is, so, sorry, a bit early in the morning for me.
That's all right. Would you like me to, to read out the response to that question first?
No, my question, my supplementary all makes sense.
Okay.
So at the committee meeting at the nineteenth of July, I asked when two mitigating actions were going to be completed. These mitigating actions were building safety, finalise and implement overarching resident engagement strategy, and building safety, finalise and implement per block resident engagement strategy. In the quarter one risk report, these both had a due date of September twenty twenty-four. The answer given at the meeting in July was that they were due by October twenty twenty-four. The answer given today for when they're going to be done is that the current target date for one of them is April twenty twenty-five. And in the risk reports from the Strategy Committee, the finalise and implement per block resident engagement strategy has a due date of thirty-first of December twenty twenty-five. I actually have quite a few questions I would like to ask, but obviously I only have one more supplementary. Okay. When an answer is given at a previous committee meeting, it becomes inaccurate, whose job is it, is it to update the expectations of the public? Because the answers I have given before, only a few months ago, now wildly, wildly inaccurate. Is it my job to keep coming to these meetings and keep updating my expectation of when the fire safety mitigating actions will be completed?
Yeah, Dan, I think that's an absolutely reasonable question. And, and yes, it's true, we haven't, we haven't kept to the timelines that were originally announced. I mean, as you can imagine, this is, you know, this is a very complex programme, and it's, it's going to take many years to, to fix all of the issues that have been identified. But yes, we, so we, we initially published a, a date when we expected this work to be done. We now, we now know that that's not going to be the case. Your question is, is about what, how do I make sure that, that the public is kept updated when those, when those timings slip? And I think that's a really, really reasonable question, and we do need to develop an answer to that, don't we? Fiona, is there something you'd like to add?
Yeah, I, I think, as, as my colleague has said, I think it's a really reasonable question. And, and we do need to develop more effective ways of communicating when dates that we give out change. So I, I will take this one away and will ensure that I come back with a, a clear approach to improved engagement where we change dates on, especially in such circumstances around resident engagement strategy.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And, and I would say that one way that we do that is by bringing regular updates to this committee. But I think that's, that's not always going to be the answer that we need, so we probably need some kind of register of, of when changes like that happen.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks very much, Dan. So, so moving on then, so your, your next question was about the strategic housing review and the equality's impact of it.
Yeah, thank you for the answer.
Sorry?
Thank you for the answer.
Great, thanks very much, Dan. Okay, so I'm going to move on then, if that's all right? And, and we're going to move on to, to question eight, which is from Shabhan Ali. I don't see Shabhan in the room, though. And so moving on again, my question, Joanna Booth. I'm not seeing Joanna either. So that brings us to the end of our public questions. So we've also received three public statements. And two of those are in relation to agenda items. But the first of those is from Shabhan Ali. Again, Shabhan is not here. So I'm going to move on to the second of our public statements, which is from Dan Aykroyd.
First, I would very much appreciate if all officers and elected members would stop answering questions about fire safety with answers about consumer standards. Yes, they are both serious issues, but there seems to be a deliberate effort to conflate the two of them. In particular, although councillor Diap apologised for the failings with regard to key consumer standards, there has not been a clear acknowledgement from the council that it is breaching the fire safety legislation. I mean, it's, it's obvious to me, since the Savills report, that the housing department has been in a terrible state for years, and that information has been kept secret from the public. When I asked at the July meeting about when is there going to be an investigation, you said that it wasn't the time. And fair enough, it was more important to start fixing things rather than invest, investigating how the problem got so bad without anyone knowing. But you're now in a position where you're putting in place a reform of the housing department without allowing the public to know how this terrible situation came to be. I am disgusted by the answer given to my third question about the equality's impact. It seems clear to me that this council doesn't feel like it needs to consult the public. I note that Mr Varley is not here. His last appearance at full council took a lot out of him, and I believe he is not well enough to attend this meeting. So he is unable to represent anyone from Gilton House. The scale of the failings in the housing department is an abomination. The failure has cost a huge amount of money through lost revenue of empty properties, a costly evacuation of Barton House that probably could have been avoided, a huge amount of money being spent on a waking watch. And the people of Bristol have suffered from mouldy housing and a traumatic evacuation. I think these failings are probably about to a crime, both through a duty of failure, both through a failure in a duty of care, as well as a failure of duty to deliver best value. You need to start a process of holding an investigation. The cause of the problems that led to huge financial and health costs need to be documented before they can be fixed. It will take time to start an investigation. The first task of defining the scope of the investigation will take a few weeks, and then it will be at Christmas, and then it will be budget season. So I doubt that an investigation could even be completed before then, but you've got to start it soon. In two weeks, it's the anniversary of the Barton House evacuation. I'm going to be there, and I'm going to be telling people that they need to demand an investigation. But it seems clear to me that the Greens campaigning on openness and better way of doing politics cannot be relied on whilst they are actually in government.
Thanks for your statement, Dan. So we, we've also received a statement from Fadmo Farah. Now, this, this statement was, was received yesterday, and it hasn't been published. I'm afraid, but that will be published. But it, but yes, it, it hasn't been published because it came in after the deadline. Having said that, I'd still like to accept the statement to the public forum. So Fadmo, if you'd like to speak to the statement now.
I'm really sorry, I'm waiting my daughter to read. Is it possible, she'll be here in the next five minutes, but if not, it's my problem.
I'm afraid we are going to have to move on to, to the next item of business, I'm afraid. So if you'd like to speak on behalf of your daughter, you have the opportunity now. Otherwise, I think I'm afraid we're going to have to move on.
I'm just going to summarize it, I'm not gonna say the whole statement. Well, it has been very difficult for all of us and we feel like we keep knocking doors and we're not getting any answers at all. Our children are suffering, we are suffering, there's a financial loss for us as well. I'm campaigning all the time, spending all my time helping all the residents who are struggling. Most of them do not speak English and they don't have a voice. Ninety percentage of us in Barton House are ethnic minorities. They're empty flats. I've talked to the British City Council to make sure that, that they, we look, you know, support the residents and at the moment we're not getting the support that we needed. Most of the residents asked for it to be housed or to receive power and and this didn't happen and that hasn't happened yet and we still don't know what's happening. And we're asking British City Council to start independent investigation, what happened to us? Have we been treated properly? And that's the question I have. As we all know, ninety percentage of us are ethnic minorities, have we been treated properly? And it's children who are seeing mental health professionals because of the, what the question calls. Have they, have they received any support as well? So when, when, the question I have is when, when is British City Council taking us seriously? When are we receiving a formal apology? We've never received a formal apology. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Fadmo. So that concludes the public forum element of today's meeting. And I've got, I've got a hand from councillor Eddie.
Chairman, since we have the chief executor, Michael Score, here, can I suggest respectfully, we might want to take strategic housing next? I dare say they may have other things they could actually do with their time.
I see. Paul, is that something that you would appreciate?
I mean, I'm in your hands, Chair, I mean, I'm very happy to stay with the board. Thank you. I'm very happy, Chair, to stay through the meeting if that's, if that's how you prefer to handle the meeting. Alternatively, if you'd like to elevate the strategic housing item, that's good as well. So I mean, your hands and the committees.
Well, I mean, I think actually, if it's all right, because, because we've got the agenda that, you know, as it's published, it may be that members of the public might want to attend for particular items. And I think what I would probably consider would be the most open thing to do would be to stick with the agenda as it's been published. And so given that, I'm gonna move on to agenda item seven. This is the finance update report. Now, this is the twenty four to twenty five, period five, finance forecast report for the housing revenue account and the general fund housing element. So this report presents to the committee, housing and landlord services financial forecast of period five against the approved budget as at the end of May twenty twenty four. There are no decisions to be taken on this report, which is for information. I did want to mention, though, that unfortunately, the report's author is unable to be here to focus and relieve. But what we have agreed is that in future, because we, because we recognise that finance reporting can be quite complex and difficult for people to understand, we're going to make sure that key information is displayed on a sideshow when, when this report's being introduced. We're not gonna do that today because we don't have that person there, but that will be, that will be our practice from now on. And I'm gonna invite Fiona Lester, interim director of housing and landlord services, to briefly outline the report.
So, thank you. As explained, I'm providing the update of the P five forecast. So just to take you through the, the basic outline that I hold. So on the general fund revenue account, the annual budget, twenty two point nine million, with an outturn for P four, twenty six point seven million. We saw a small reduction of naught point seven million. And that's really due to a release of a century-held inflation budget, inflationary budget, and not a specific reduction in overspend. So in terms of the general fund capital fund, we have a budget of thirty five point two million. So there's a forecast outturn of twenty six point one million with a reduction of two point five million since P four. And that reduction relates to two things. So we've got Fillwood, so that's around the reprofiling, profiling due to the delivery of timetables with the construction partners. So that gave us a small reduction of one point three million and a grant payment to our P's of naught point eight million due to the revised timetables and some small movements totaling naught point four million. Moving on to the HRA revenue accounts. For P five, the forecast shows an increase of twenty three point, twenty, two point three million for P four in our position. And I just need to point out, we have waking watch costs at two point four million, an increase of provision due to St Jude's, the work that we're doing there, and an increased cost relating to the consumer standards programme of naught point four, four million. And some other small movements of naught point three million. Taking us on to the HRA capital. So we have a reduction of one point nine million on P four with the acceleration of the fire safety works and changes to the scope of electricity works at one point nine million. So in relation to our new build, there's some slippage there in, due to the accelerated spend across the schemes as detailed in the detailed report. So we saw a movement at P four of twenty six point nine million. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Fiona. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna open up to, to questions and comments for members in a minute. But I just wanted to, I just wanted to reflect that, again, this, this financial report reflects some very substantial continued pressures, both within the housing revenue account section of our budget, so that's the, that's the part that is council rents, the income from those and the spending against those on our own council homes, and also the general fund, so this is the part of, the part of the council's overall budget that is, that is spent by the housing service. And so those pressures come, in the case of the housing revenue account section, this is very much about the, the impact of the new consumer standards and the need that we have to spend to bring our homes up to, up to decent standards. And in the case of the general fund element, this is the continuing impact of homelessness on our city, really. So that the, the temporary accommodation subsidy loss that has been mentioned is a direct impact of the, of the continuing very high demand for temporary accommodation in our city. And these pressures are very substantial and we are working extremely hard to mitigate those. So I'm gonna open up to questions and comments now. I'm gonna go to councillor Stone first and then councillor Eddie.
Yes, thanks very much and I can, I appreciate those comments, Chair, about temporary accommodation. However, I'd like to just bring our attention to the, the slippage or the underspend of twenty eight million pounds in the capital works. And I just wanted to know, well, where the assurances are that we can actually provide a, maybe a better housing strategy in the future so that we can understand exactly, you know, maybe we've been over ambitious in the past, so we can get these figures right. So I just wanted to know your thoughts about that, Chair, please.
Yeah, so, so members of this committee are, have been involved in sessions this month, which are providing a deep dive into our affordable housing delivery plans for, for the next couple of years. And we're also going to be involved in work next month, looking into our housing investment plans. So members of this committee are gonna have more opportunities to get involved in, in making those decisions that will put us on a, on an even footing for the future and means that we'll be able to deliver both the improvements to our existing homes and the new homes that we need for the city. Can I ask if Fiona or Michael would like to?
So was it councillor Stone, was it in relation to new build slippage or, or capital slippage?
Yeah, it was, it was in relation to the housing capital programme summary, where we can see that there's a underspend of twenty eight million pounds on the capital works. And I thought that might be because we had an over ambitious plan, but you can tell me.
Okay. So, yeah, thank you.
Apologies, I thought we were referencing just new build. So, yeah, in a response to that, agreed, we are working hard to make sure that the housing investment plan is accurate moving forward. Some of the initiatives to do so is the development of service level capital investment board, planned investment board, which brings together key stakeholders to horizon scan, look at the projects required and then look at the specification scope and then other key priorities from residents and response repairs to make sure said scope of works is fit for purpose and estimated the right value. Although two years ago it was really difficult to do that, we've seen hyperinflation happen, so estimates, best estimates were still slightly out on what the real actuals came through at.
I've got councillor Eddie next and then councillor Goggin.
As the Director remarked, we don't have a finance manager here, or deputy, his deputy. So I'll break the habit of a lifetime, not whose questions do you, partly because I've seen this paper twice before and ask officers questions. Obviously, as Chairmen remarked, on the HRA expenditure, the housing options is almost five billion overspent. And this primarily, as you remarked, to do with the challenge of homelessness. Last enough, we actually received a paper from Paul Sylvester confirming the, the strategy for tackling this, which is encouraging, of course, but we need to make, move outside with our housing reg, partners, regulated partners and also certainly our DC colleagues for modular investment to address this issue, of course. I'm not belittling the challenge here. Although councillors don't fairly raise the issue of the almost ten million pound underspend in the capital programme to date. In my view, I believe it's that God gives us a bit of our financial breathing space. Obviously, some of the slippages planned, more is less planned, of course. But we all know that actually there is, the pressures will continue later this year, next year. So we do need to, as a committee, scrutinize every single piece of expenditure. And for the sake of what the housing regulators have said and our commitments for dealing with homelessness, witness city, we need to actually squeeze every penny from every pound in future. Perhaps it's unfair to expect officers to answer what could be construed as a political question from councillor Stone. In my view, I do believe the previous administration's housing delivery programme was overly ambitious and that has caused us issues, of course, which we are seeking to address. We clearly need to actually have a more realistic delivery system in the future. And that's not suggesting that dealing with the housing crisis shouldn't be this or that as the number one priority. But we need to work with the private sector and the housing association partners to deal with that challenge.
Thank you, Richard, thanks for coming. I'm gonna go to-
Sorry, excuse me, Chair, he, he said my name about three times, I think I have the right to reply?
Well, yeah, if you'd like to respond directly, that's fine.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say at the end of the statement, yes, I, I can't not agree but disagree with councillor Eddie. And that is that when we are delivering, we have to have a robust plan. Because when we're delivering these capital programmes, usually there is a time limit on, on the funding that we, we apply for. And that time limit, for example, if we don't spend X, Y, Z amount of money by twenty twenty six and we lose it. So we must have measures like a, like a housing strategy to make sure that when we are, when we are applying for this funding, huge amounts of funding that we can deliver on time for the, for the residents of Bristol and not just use it as, okay, it doesn't matter that we haven't spent twenty eight million pounds, maybe we can just give that back to the government. And that's where I was coming from. We need a proper strategy so that we can plan for the future so that we don't lose the money that these residents deserve. Thanks.
I'm gonna go to councillor Goggin next.
Thank you, Chair. It's a, a question or, well, I'm seeking assurance, really, around the, the general fund capital and the Fillwood project. Obviously, there's what looks like money coming from different parts. We've also got talk of the multi-use games area being paused while we're talking about alternative plans. I'm just trying to get some assurance that this is an area, obviously, in Noel West, which has been neglected for decades. And we're, you know, they're really looking forward to this, this redevelopment. I just want some assurance that despite the, the money being moved around, it is still, you know, going ahead as planned.
Thanks, thanks very much for that, Paul, yeah. Yeah, I visited the Fillwood development recently and it's, it's a really exciting project which is gonna deliver huge benefits, I think, for the people of Noel West and beyond. It is true that the, that the money is coming from different sources and some of that has, has quite tight timescales on it. So we are, we do have a programme that's, that's, I would say, ambitious and needs to be delivered quickly in order to realise all of those benefits. But I'm, I'm very confident that we're, that we're pushing ahead with that and that we are gonna deliver it within the, within the timescales that we need to. Pass over to Fiona.
Yeah, I was just simply gonna say absolutely, that's correct. And it's just a simple matter of reprofiling the budget due to natural slippage through the contract.
And I had a hand from councillor Shabalala and councillor Clark first then.
Thank you, Chair, thank you. I just wanted to refer back to your statement right at the beginning, when you talked about the budget. And I did put my hand up. And the reason I put my hand up, and I think it's probably relevant to this point as well, is when we're going to find out exactly how much money is gonna shake down to Bristol? So then, are we gonna get shed loads of money, which is going to make a manifest difference to the way that we can run for the next year? Or have we got any indication and do we have any idea when we get an indication of how much money we may have for specific budget headings? And that was going to be my question earlier on, and I think is relevant now.
Yeah, I think that's an extremely important question. We don't have that, that detailed information yet. We, we are expecting that we will be getting that over the next, next few weeks and months. I think what I would say from my point of view is that while a lot of these announcements are very welcome and they, they, in, in some cases, for example, things like the rent settlement, they reflect recommendations that we've made as a council to the government, along with our partners in the CH twenty group, which produced a report earlier this year called Securing the Future of Council Housing. And it's really gratifying to see that, that some of those recommendations have been adopted by the government. Overall, though, I would say from my point of view, this is, this is not, this is not a game changer. There are some welcome announcements, there's some other stuff in the budget that's perhaps not so welcome. But, you know, we are, we're still looking for the, for the assurance that we need to be able to, to really invest to the level that we know that we need to, to, to address the housing crisis in our city. invest to the level that we know that we need to, to address the housing crisis in our city. If there's anything you do feel that you'd like to add. And we had Sibbs next.
Yeah. They say not to cry over spilled milk, but I think with some of the normally what others would call vanity projects or over ambitious projects are very clearly outlined here. And with the size of the spillage that's gone through from multiple projects, from voids, et cetera, kitchen projects, you name it, there's just spillages at most of these contracts. I think the city would be up mourning again at the, you know, misspent allocation of resources. So again, to what my colleague is saying is, I think we need better measures of making sure that the ambitions are realistic, not only in the timeline, but also within the budget. But obviously, that budget needs the skills and the labour and the small businesses or large businesses that can deliver on those ambitions. If we set to build homes without the skills being available at the city, then some of those plans may not necessarily be tangible. There's about two point three million of additional staff that's been, that's kind of come through in terms of the housing and consumer standards. I think it'd be really good to know what level of staff that is and also the diversity of that workforce that's helping to address the issue that members also raised in terms of the question. That'd be really good to know. We could see about zero point three million in terms of voids. It'd be really comprehensive to understand what we are doing to address that. It feels like there's some quick wins and it feels like there's some massive losses. I wonder how we can square the two to, you know, find amicable solutions to things that are achievable and realistic within the right timeframe. However, my question, though, is more around the staff capacity in dealing with the past targets and where we feel the staff capacity needs to be or morale needs to be to deal with a more realistic, you know, housing planning strategy. What would the difference mean, you know? And I think a lot of it is based on staff morale. We've seen the recent surveys showing that staff is feeling more positive. But what does that staff morale do in terms of that delivery? You know, if we set high goals, is it more stressful for staff? If we set realistic goals, is it much more achievable? Does that create a better working culture? And in that working culture, can we do more? So not really that much about the budget, but more about the team so that we've got the mindset and the kind of will to make sure that things are done effectively and thoroughly and there's enough time to think through plans and not, you know, over egg things.
Thanks very much, Sibbs. And I think some of what you're talking about is addressed in the in the item on the strategic housing review that we'll be discussing later on. But I wanted to pass over to Fiona to talk about some of the items, some of the issues you've raised.
So thank you. Just to respond to some of the items that you've raised and, as we've said, much of that will be covered from the strategic housing review. But from an officer level, and I think that's what we're talking about here, I absolutely recognise the comments that you make around how do we, you know, if we're recruiting additional resource, what does that look like? In terms of, you know, its impact on the city, ethnicity and numbers. And also, how do we then ensure that that workforce feel valued and are able to deliver? So one of the things that I just want to share with you is that we have, we've been doing some work on our Rising Stars and celebrating that with staff. We've also got a forthcoming staff conference taking place in November where we're spending some time just reflecting on the year that's passed and the challenges that we faced and looking at the year ahead and the challenges that we're going to face, but celebrating success. Because we spend a lot of time talking about the things that we don't do well and we recognise that. But for staff on the ground, it's the recognition that we all come to work to try and do a very good job for our residents and for citizens. So just taking a little bit of time to celebrate that and to recognise it, which is going to be quite important. Because we know that we've got a lot of work ahead of us in the sort of two years to come.
I'm gonna move us on now because we've got a lot of items still to address on our agenda. So, sorry, Jerome, I'm gonna move us on because we're in our end and I think we need to move on to our next item. But hopefully you'll be able to address your points in the future item as well. So I'd like to I'd like to ask that the the Committee for Homes and Housing Delivery notes the report on the P five forecast for housing and landlord services as per the recommendation set out. Thank you very much. So our next item, item eight, is the quarterly performance report. And this is to brief the committee on performance against the council's business plan as relevant to the remit of this committee for quarter one twenty four twenty five. There's no decisions to be taken on this report, which is for information. I'm going to invite Felicity Williamson, who is the Strategic Intelligence and Performance Advisor, to briefly outline the report.
Thank you, Chair. Morning councillors. As the chairs explain, this is your quarter one performance report and it's the actions and performance metrics within the council's annual business plan that are relevant to this committee that are in the report. So you'll see, and so it is the status as at June this year. So you'll see there's some mixed performance when you look at the overview. You've got some areas that are performing as where we'd hoped them to be, you know, or better than target. So particularly around some of the strategy development on homelessness and rough sleeping and also private renters. And then the refresh of project one thousand around affordable housing. But there are other areas you'll see that aren't performing either. When you look at an action, it's not something we measure numerically. It's, you know, it's a point, are we where we'd hope to be with that action? And then there are other metrics that you can measure with numbers and there are some that aren't performing where we hoped they would be at this point. So things like homes with E P C certificate of seal lower is not performing quite where we'd want it to be. And then you'll see the action plan, which I know there's an item coming up around investment and the priorities and the complexity that we have. It's not, it's been deemed as behind schedule for Q one. And then you've got one red metric there, which is your relat time. Although it's significantly behind target, it's actually much improved from the previous quarter. So I think it's something like hundred and twenty days, it's down to a hundred and two. I think I should probably have the numbers in front of me. So there is mixed performance, but I won't go into any in detail, just an overview. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Felicity. Yeah, and thanks for highlighting the relat times to succeed. I mean, I think that's something that has been a longstanding concern within this council and of this committee since its inception as well. Relat times are stubbornly high. It's fair to say, but we are making, we are making progress there now, which is great to see. So I'm gonna ask the committee for any questions or comments that you might like to make on this. I'm particularly looking at Jerome because I cut you off before, so I don't know whether there's anything you'd like to start us off with.
Well, I might shoehorn in the question I missed out on, so. I'm concerned about the project cost overruns and surprised to see that it's not a metric here. So, I mean, it would be really good to know, I mean, it sounds like on some of those energy efficiency workers, Little Cross House, two point six million overspend, that we're getting a kind of cost plus arrangement rather than contractors working to agree budgets. So it would be really helpful to know what kind of project discipline is in place to make sure that these projects are running to budget and who among the officers here has got responsibility for making sure that those projects run on time and on budget?
I think that's a really important point, Jerome. I think, I think from my point of view, one of the things that we have lacked is finance capacity within the housing service. And really, with all of the challenges that we've seen with inflation, especially construction inflation, I think the ability to sort of manage and understand those costs and those increases is something that's very challenging and we need to get better at doing. I'm gonna pass over to Craig for a response to that.
Hello. I didn't introduce myself before, so Craig Kirk, Head of Repairs and Maintenance. I'm not solely responsible, ultimately responsible for the budget management of Little Cross House in my service. From recollection, and I will check for the minutes after, it's a forecast overspend for this year, not a forecast overspend for the life of the project because it spans multiple years. And it's an actual positive thing for Little Cross House because it's also linked to the Social Housing Decarbonisation Fund grant application, which completes for March twenty twenty five. So where we forecast a lower budget expenditure earlier in the year, as we were more accurate moving through, it's an increase. And usually that's a bad thing, but across the life of the project, it's not an overall expenditure increase. And it will mean we can secure set funding from the S H D F fund within the grant window.
Thank you for that clarity. I'm gonna go to councillor Clark next and then councillor Goggin.
Thank you very much, Chair. I just wanted to, obviously, it's not a fabulously positive report. I mean, there are some areas of quite significant concern within it. And I just want to find out and some reassurance that measures are being taken to stem the tide, really. And, you know, things like, well, obviously, the thing, we've just spoken about the onsite being delayed, relats, obviously, the figures aren't looking great there. Just want reassurances that you're on the case and that things are going to improve significantly in the next quarter.
Thank you, councillor Clark. Absolutely. It's a key metric in my service as well. I sit with the team weekly to monitor performance. There's lots of increased scrutiny on performance metrics we've created over the past several years to make sure that there's good visibility and performance to work with the teams so we can follow and track progress amongst the properties. Absolutely, it's something that we're working really hard to do. I'm also reassured that our backlog of voids has now dropped to twenty two, which is the lowest it's been since I've been in post. But there's still more work to be done. The way that we manage the tendencies, the historic lack of investment in the properties is causing lots of additional work required when we get to the homes to refurbish now. We are currently on our last three month performance, we're at seventy six days for repairs. And we need to include the back at the front and the back end of the relat as well. But that is improving on where we are as we're moving through the oldest properties in that backlog list. Some initiatives that we've implemented are pre-exit interviews to inspect the property before people leave so we can capture some of those repairs. Digital viewing and sign-ups through the process, promise certificates so we can move people in quicker if there's a very small repair that needs to happen that wouldn't affect safety or the detriment of, as well as then any other further repairs on notice periods for residents and inspections that we might be able to do in the notice period. So day and nought, we're already moving through the process. So absolutely, it's a key priority for us.
Thank you very much. And actually, I was gonna ask a supplementary, but I think you've already answered it. I was going to ask you if you fully understand why you have this problem. But your answer is actually, you've given me a really strong indication that you actually understand what the issues are and you are starting to address those issues. So thank you.
Thanks very much. So I've got councillor Goggin, councillor Eddie, councillor Stone and councillor Shabalala, and then I'm gonna move us on.
I'll be quick, Chair. A question on the reducing rough sleeping. Obviously, the figures are very disappointing to have gone up so massively. What I'm also concerned about is as we get into winter now, the number of people sleeping in inadequate caravan accommodation, often let by rogue landlords with dangerous heating without ventilation, damp mould, et cetera. I'm worried that is going to, again, feed into this even more. And I wondered if we were doing anything to try and crack down on this as well.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, so a couple of things on that. One is that, as you say, rough sleeping is a huge, huge concern in the city. The numbers of people sleeping rough in Bristol have been fairly steady for the last few years. But we want to get to a position where nobody ever has to sleep rough in our city again. I'm gonna be going out and joining the team on the rough sleeping count next month. And this is something that is extremely important to us to make sure that we that we connect with people, that we're able to understand what their needs are and that we can provide the support they need. On vehicle dwelling, we know that we have well in excess of six hundred vehicles people are living in in the city now. Over a thousand individuals, thousand people living in vehicles, including children. So we've got, I think, ambitious plans in development to do things like provide M I sites and opportunities for people to access services and find ways of moving into settled accommodation. I'm gonna be convening a round table a bit later this year. We have councillor Williams, who's Chair of Public Health and Communities Committee. And we're gonna be getting people together from across the council and our partner agencies to really sort of try and make sure that we've got the best possible response to this continuing crisis.
Yeah.
I knew you wanted to say something about-
Thank you, Chair. Just to add to that, what I would say is that we do have a proactive approach at the moment to engaging with our vehicle dwellers and working with them positively. And I think that's going to be key as we move into the cold winter months.
Thanks both. And I'm more than happy to accompany you on the rough sleep count if you want.
Thank you very much, Paul. I appreciate that. Great. And Alice, well, super. Okay. So let's see, who am I gonna go to next? I think I had Lisa and Richard. So I'll go to Lisa next and then Richard.
Excuse me. I just wanted to bring, oh, thanks, Chair. Thank you. I just wanted to bring our attention to the training and professionalisation of the culture of maintenance and trades. And I know that there was a training, there is some training in progress, it's behind schedule. And I just want some assurances that that's going to continue, especially the professionalisation of trades now. You know, I've spoken to people across the wards and sometimes you can get a mixed bag on that. But I'm gonna give you a quick example. Say, for example, I don't know. A void premise comes into our occupation and before we know it, the carpets are ripped out mainly because if you're going to redecorate, I do come from a construction background, so I just want to make sure that you know that. So if you're gonna redecorate a property, that's easier just to rip out all the carpet, even though it is good, because obviously you don't have to protect it. You don't have to put down anything down to protect it. You can quickly stop on the paint, you can do all the necessary works and then you leave it there. So within about forty eight hours, usually, I've noticed, I've heard that these carpets are taken out. So I just want to see whether or not we can have a little bit of compassion when we're using, when we're doing these type of maintenance or voids. Also with complaints, I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of work and complaints and how we are actually dealing with complaints. And also, obviously, we've got to deal with residents. Residents are people, they're our residents and we need to support them and respect them. So I just wanted to know your views on that, Chair, that was all.
Thanks very much, Lisa. Who would like to respond to that?
I'll take, I'll take a seat with that. Thank you, Chair. So in relation to training for all of the staff, actually, it's very much linked in that professionalisation that you discussed. Very much linked to the consumer standards and the competency standard. We have started work in that space proactively. So working with our learning and development partners, we've done some work identifying key managers throughout landlord services, all of whom have engagement with our customers and responsibility for teams. Because we want to ensure that those individuals are qualified, suited to be qualified to hold the positions that they do and therefore train and manage their staff appropriately. So at the moment, we've, we're at the stage where we've captured- So at the moment, we've cap, we're at the stage where we've captured all of the individuals, we've ranked them, we're just trying to, at the moment, quantify the numbers and what the various qualifications that individuals would need to have to ensure that we can meet the competency standard, so there is work done in that space. We also, obviously, will have a number of individuals who are already suitably qualified, so it's just trying to do a piece of work, understanding all of that. In addition to that, I think it's important to note that in Craig's service, which is the repairs and maintenance, obviously, there's ongoing training around qualifications and, and things that we need to have in place for health and safety, and I would say that Craig's service active, are active, very active in that space, and he's, it's one of the areas of our, I would say, of strength, and we have a training plan that we can share if necessary.
Can I just come back to that, to my chair, very, very briefly? Yeah, and that's fantastic, thank you very, thank you very much, Fiona, and thank you very much, Craig. I just want to be, I just want to really make sure that our residents are, are at the centre of this, so although, I know you can have a professional, I know a professional electrician, myself, who may not be very competent in working around people, because the culture sometimes isn't, isn't that way. So, you know, I just wanna make sure that we have a resident approach and not a kind of like maintenance, get it done, dusted, ticked approach, but like I said, those carpets are usually ripped out, without, people, they're not thinking about the possibility that they could be left, because they're concerned, you know, that they have to look after them, because that's, you know, they're ticking the box, they're trying to get it done quickly.
Absolutely, it's part of my values as a leader for the service, but it's also absolutely part of the values of the managers within the service, so some of the good work that you don't see is recovering furnitures from voids that go back down to some of the reused shops, as well as a storage container that we use for people in need, who might need some additional items, a very fair point around carpets, but also a little bit more challenging around infestation at times and how that can transfer over. However, it is a live conversation around how best we can use this to maximise the benefit for residents, whilst obviously not encroaching and causing an unconscious issue that we didn't think around. But yeah, ongoing with stakeholders in the city around what we can do in that space.
The councillor Eddie.
I'll be relatively brief, partly because colleagues have raised issues of concern which I share. Firstly, for the city, thanks for your report and management notes, which detail what's been done, so that's helpful. What I would say, I appreciate there has been positive movement on the voids, I appreciate what's been done. The Chair referred to it having been a long-term issue of concern. One advantage of having been here for some time is that I have an elephant eye memory. Twenty years ago, when I was cabinet member for housing then, I do recall voids was a real issue which we were honing in on. So all I would say respectfully is, when the focus is on it, it improves, but then sometimes it doesn't improve, so it does need to give, be given concentrated effort, of course. Fiona, could I just ask a question, please? You mentioned the service celebration of success, it may be happening, but is there still a corporate celebration of success?
So I would say, yes, there is, but we, we, as well as the work that's happening in housing and landlord services, through G N R, we're doing a piece around success as well, to celebrate that corporately.
I'm gonna go to Sibs next, and then after that, I'll move us on to the next item.
Sure, thanks. Craig, this one's for you, very chair. So when we talk about relets, what are the subcategories that are part of relets, so that we can better understand which sections of those subcategories are actually taking longer? For example, it could be relets of voids from people who've passed away, or, you know, residents who've given their house back because they've moved on and done something, bought another house, you know, what are the subcategories, so that we can really start focusing on which ones are working and which ones are not? Secondly, in terms of the, the, the repairs, there's about fifteen thousand there, and good progress with the nine percent, really good progress. Would it be possible to kind of create a very clear approach in which repairs are being done, so that, you know, if someone's got minor repairs, or it's an area-based kind of repair approach, or it's minor repairs based approach based on the E P Cs or the surveys, it's very clear, so that start, people start getting a bit of a timeline of when their repairs will be done, so you know that you're last because you've got the worst, or, you know, something like that, to give people some sense of reassurance of when their repairs will be done, and they're, you know, not consistently thinking no one's doing anything, yeah? Just to rank them, you know, in terms of extreme worse or, or not. Thanks.
Thanks, Sibs. Yeah, I mean, I, I think one thing that we've discussed here before is that, is that because of the, because of the variety of stock that we own, especially, many of the homes that we own are, are very old, you know, we own Victorian and Georgian homes in some cases, that are, where the condition of them can be, can be extremely poor, and that can mean that, that getting them ready in a state that they can be relet can be extremely challenging, I think that's something that we've, we've talked about quite a bit already in this committee, isn't it? But I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass over to Craig for a fuller response.
Thank you, Chair, excuse me. So we have categorised the repairs, refurbishment for voids specifically, I'll come on to the repairs, responsive repairs in a minute, from a pre-let-in period, a post-let-in period, post-repairs period, and then inside the repairs categories, there's a number of different ones, from a general repair requirement, some that have been categorised with our accessible homes team for occupational health referrals, for specialist needs, structural works, major projects, works where there's crossover for other works going on in what could be a block, so we can see the different scales. We also know, within the subcategory of the repairs, as you're talking about, some properties are harder to let due to their place on the market, such as sheltered schemes, so we've already taken initiatives to do a different approach to our shelter scheme, like a full decks flooring throughout, to try and make it more attractive, to speed up the turnaround time, and also the rental appeal to the city. So yes, we can absolutely, are doing that in that space, and then we're also drilling down into why we're needing to do X amount of work, and then tailoring the approach to what that work looks like, and our relet standards change to give a more customer-centred approach to that where possible, and if required, and if, if taken up, around customer choice, so Dex vouchers for decorating on finished walls, whitewashed walls, as an example, if they've got the ability, which gives choice and speeds up the relet time as part of that relet process. The question around the response repairs, also categorised on a number of items, developed most recently through the Housing Consumer Standards Programme, the risk mitigation tool, which is being used across that, but in, already in the thought process to be standard level agreement, to being able to complete a repair within either emergency or standard repair times, which is in law in the Housing Act, which we need to respond to, but based on demographic of building and also asset type, as well as demographic of person, so we can then categorise the priority of said repairs. It's not perfect, but it's being developed to make sure that we categorise that repair in that time.
Thanks.
So just to, thank you, Craig, so just to, to finish off the response to your question, I think you asked a question about, do we understand our, our assets that are in the poorest condition, you know, when we get a void, and what I would say is that tends to be properties that have been abandoned and/or misused, and, and when we get those properties back, the conditions can be extremely poor, and therefore, the void turnaround times far longer.
Thank you very much, everybody. I'm gonna move us on to our next item now, okay? So I'm gonna read out the, the recommendation in the report, and the recommendation is that the Homes and Housing Delivery Committee notes performance against the business plan relevant to this committee, including the issues raised and measures to address performance issues, to be implemented by relevant services. Can I ask the committee to note the report as per the recommendations? Thank you very much. So, agenda item nine is the Housing and Consumer Standards Programme and Compliance Update. So this is the latest Housing and Consumer Standards Programme and Compliance Update, the report is for information. And so, one thing I'd like to, to point out here is that, really at this committee's request, we've got a lot more detail in this update report than we've had previously. The, we're really kind of getting down, drilling down into the, into the detail of the, of the specific programmes that are being undertaken to, to, especially to deal with the backlogs that have built up in previous years. And, and I think it's a, it's a real, it's a real tribute to the service to say that we are really getting to grips with some longstanding and entrenched problems, where we've got backlogs that have built up over a period of years, and we are, you know, in some cases, in, in a matter of, of months or even weeks, we've been clearing some of the, some of the outstanding work that, that, you know, that, that residents have been living with for, for years and years, so it's, it's a mixed picture, there are, there's some areas where we're making much better progress than others, and I'm sure the committee will want to, to really sort of drill down and interrogate the, the detail of the work that's been going on here. Another thing that I wanted to mention before handing over to, to Richard, is that, so as, as the committee knows, we've been given a C three grading by the regulator, which is the third out of, out of four possible ratings, along with some of our peers, so there are other local authorities that have been given the same grading, and what that really means is that we have serious failings in our service, but we do have the capacity and, and a plan to address those failings. Recently, Newham Council has been given a C four grading, and that means that in the judgment of the regulator, that local authority has, has neither the capacity nor the, nor the plan to be able to address the scale of failings in its, in its housing. We are not at that stage, we are working closely and positively with the regulator to, to get us on a course to, to reach a C one rating, which means that we will be fully compliant with all of the requirements of the Act, and we will be, we'll be in a place where we'll be able to say we are delivering a decent, good service to all of our residents. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand over now to Richard James, who's the interim head of Business Development for Housing and Landlord Services, who's gonna briefly outline a report for you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, yeah, the, the update covers a few areas, so I'm just gonna give a, a brief update of the, of the different areas and then open up for questions. So first thing I'd like to, to pull out is the, the improvement plan summary update, so that's under section one and appendix A I. So this is a summary of how we're doing against the programme overall, so the areas I'd just like to, to, to pull out, that to, which are key areas for focus for the programme, are around the H H S R S, which is the Housing Health and Safety Rating System, so this is a, a number of different risks within homes and how we rectify new risks or identify, so there's still a lot of work being, being undertaken in that area, and that's very, we'd, something we discussed at the last meeting, that's very closely linked to the Stock Condition Survey and identifying those risks within the homes as well. Electrical safety is, is also a clear area, I'll come to that under a different section to give a bit more summary of that. Fire safety also remains a really big focus for the programme, and there are, there's some good news, but there's also some challenges there, which I'll touch on in a minute. And damp mould in our, in our homes is, is another big area that we're making progress, and we touched on resources earlier, there were dedicated teams being put into place, but there are lots of challenges there, and we are, we're still identifying the, the true extent of that, I'll, I'll come to that in a second as well in a bit more detail. So, so that's sort of the programme summary. The next section was looking at a performance update, so that's in section two and appendix A I, similar themes, as you mentioned earlier, there is some good progress on electrical safety, we're doing a lot of electrical inspections, aspect inspections, good, really good progress on that as well, as well as fire risk assessments, water risk assessments, and clearing backlog of repairs, there, there remain challenges around delivery of fire remedial actions and damp mould, and they're, they're a clear area of focus, as well as the general H H S R S areas. So then, just the next update was, was around just some feedback from, from, from customers, we have discussed at this meeting about hearing the, the resident's voice and how we link into that, and so there's, there's an update in here and how we're engaging with the housing scrutiny panel. Of course, this will go into the wider review with, with, with the housing management board as well. So within the report, I won't go down through the areas, but there were, there were themes that came out from, from, from those meetings about concerns from, from residents, I'm happy to answer any questions about those. There is a, a correlation between that and, and what was identified by, by Savos as well in, in other areas. So the next section, sorry, my computer's refreshing, so I'll do my speaking. So just the next section to pull out was just an update on the meeting with the regulator of social housing, and just say, we're, we're, we're having monthly, very positive and proactive meetings with them, but what, the one thing I did want to pull out is, the, the regulator started to talk to us about us really understanding the root cause of the issues and mapping out, and understanding that detailed roadmap about what those root causes are and how we're going to evidence that we satisfy all of the issues, again, touching on one of the comments within, you know, within the public gallery as well, so that's an area that we're gonna come to future meetings with more detail on that as, as we develop that, but I just wanted to, to pull that out, because I think that's gonna be important and a key area of focus for the committee going forward. So that's all the updates I wanted to, to highlight, I'm happy to open it out and any questions.
Thank you very much, Richard. Got a hand from councillor Goggin, so I'll go to the pool first.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just a, a quick question, unfortunately, I'm a bit of an expert, as Fiona knows, on antisocial behaviour, and there is a note in there to say that the plan is to review the antisocial behaviour policy and procedures to be completed by November twenty twenty four, so as it's the first today, I wonder how we're getting on with that?
Yeah, the, the antisocial behaviour policy has been reviewed, it's out for public consultation at the moment, and it will be implemented shortly in the, in, in the new year, so it's, it's on target with what we had within the plan, which is great.
Got a hand from councillor Eddie.
Richard, firstly, again, I praise your dedication duty, Fiona tells me you flew back Fran, you were leaving yesterday to attend this meeting, so A star. I would personally have words with the director and request your own personal C Harrier, though when I last made that joke, the officer replied, what's the C Harrier? There we are. Thank you for the report, which details the huge work you and your team are taking. You kindly previously brought it to both councillor Parsons and myself, and also to the committee. Obviously, there are things which we perform better than we hate, there are things we're not, that's the nature of things. Could I particularly allude to the engagement with tenants, and you did, you mentioned that on page twenty-nine? Is that because, I'm guessing, your team is very focused on actually dealing with the technical challenges? Is that being actually fronted by tenant participation?
Yes, there, there, there's a lot of work in this area, so we're facilitating a review as part of the programme, but a lot of the... the programme, but a lot of the reviewing of processes is within tenant participation team, but actually all of the other operational teams. So there's huge parts within housing teams as well, because there's a theme that came out in the report about being visible and being on these states. So there's huge work in that area. So the programme is facilitating it, but a lot of the work on the ground is being done by the delivery teams, as you expect, to ensure that the change is embedded.
I have to say, credit where credit's due. I say why, but the administration's been very positive on being open with our own tenants, so that's commendable. But I believe councillor Parsons and I would certainly welcome that being further embedded, of course, but credit where credit's due.
Thank you, Richard. Councillor Thomas.
Yes, thank you. Could you give an indication of who's responsible for the IT project, which is bringing the reporting together so that we've got a kind of a one-stop view? I'm a bit concerned that we haven't really got any visibility of when this IT system with a kind of overview is actually going to be delivered or...
So, I can take that one, thank you, Chair. So, yes, so the IT project, we have a programme board. So there's a programme board with oversight and clear governance through the organisation. The delivery of the first phase of the new product, which we call NEC, is due in January. And then we have second phases, phase two and phase three. So we are on target at the moment, things are going quite well. We had some slippage and so there's been an awful lot of work. I've done a lot of work in that space actually since I've been in post, just to push things forward and get us back on target. But at the moment, we're on target. There's obviously an awful lot of work to do because, as you quite clearly point out, understanding our data, if you put poor data in, you're going to get poor data out. So there's a lot of work being done at the moment around data cleansing and data entry. Yes.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say that I actually attended the meeting of the programme board last week. And it's going to be, I think, a big shift in the way that we manage and conduct our services across the whole range of housing activities as well. One thing I hadn't really understood before attending that board was that this new system that we're moving to, everyone from repairs teams to housing options to home maintenance services will be using the same system, they'll be the same source of information. And there will be access to that in a way that hasn't been all in the same place before. And the initial adoption of this system is going to be a kind of big bang in January. It's, the plan is that all of the old systems will be migrated to the new one in one go. And from that point onwards, there will be access to data across all of those different services. It's going to be, I think, an exciting change. Councillor Shabalala.
Yes, thanks, Rich, for your summary for the document. My question is regarding page 36, Work Stream Three and Four, neighbourhood and tenants. And you've got the table, Table Two, progress summary of Work Stream. Can you just explain Work Stream Three and Four?
Yes, I can, just hold on a second, I can just get that. Okay. So Work Stream Three is around the neighbourhood. So that's looking at developing a robust approach and enhancing our approach to the standards of our communal spaces. It also picks up how we respond to antisocial behaviour, which we spoke about earlier, and domestic abuse. And it looks at developing locality plans as well for, to make sure that we're meeting the local residents' need in that area and developing clear service standards. So that, that Work Stream's called our neighbourhood Work Stream, so it's very much focused on the operational neighbourhood management area. Work Stream Four is what we call our tenancy Work Stream. And that is looking at our overall approach to tenancy management and how we allocate and let homes. And also how we review our approach to sustainability of tenancies and how we ensure that we can support residents to stay in their homes. There is a summary at the top of, I think, Appendix I, A I. It has sort of a very, I know it's a very brief summary.
Yeah, so it's just looking at the task complete and those are the ones that are both at zero?
Yeah.
So in terms of, does that mean the tasks are in progress or started or...?
They are being progressed, yeah. And we're starting to see more completion of actions coming through. So what we mentioned earlier was the antisocial behaviour policy. So the report that went to the programme board, just we went on holiday, closed off a number of actions from that area and you'll see that through from the next meeting. We deliberately focused first on the highest risk areas in this programme, which were mainly around the Work Stream One, which is around the quality and safety standard, and Work Stream Five, which were other cross-cutting areas. So, but there are clear priorities for those other areas and they're starting to come through, but a lot of them also are bigger pieces of work which take time to work through.
And residents' engagement would be within three or four?
I think that one's in three, yeah.
In three.
Before I go to councillor Stone, is there anyone else whose hand I've missed? Okay. So we'll go to Lisa then, and then we'll wrap up this slide.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to approach the subject of possible, well, from what you said at the beginning, when you start, when you introduced this topic, we were talking about some of the antiquated homes that we have in our portfolio. The stock that we have is possibly, you know, very difficult to maintain and maybe incredibly expensive to bring back into use. So I wanted to know what our plans were for renewal, our approach to renewal, and whether or not we could engage in our residents to think about how we can renew some of our stock. And I don't know, from conversations that I've had recently, it may be a novel approach, but it may be an approach that residents would actually appreciate.
Shall I start off and then I might open it out? I think, well, this programme is going to act as a facilitator, I suppose. Well, what we need to be able to make informed decisions about all of our homes is information about them. So that comes into the Stock Condition Survey and all of the other inspections that we're doing, but also around the resident engagement to really understand what residents like about our homes and what the challenges are. So this programme will help gather all of that information together. And then what we will be doing next is carrying out sort of an appraisal of all of our homes, which looks at how they perform financially, but also the quality of those homes and actually how satisfied residents are with them and sort of brings that together so we can look at our home, all of our properties and make informed strategic decisions going forward. But they have to be rooted on really high-quality information to ensure that we're making the right decisions.
Thanks, Richard. Yeah, I mean, I would say from my point of view, I think that this council doesn't have a strategic approach to estate renewal at the moment. When I speak to people at other local authorities and in housing associations that have large stocks of homes, they very often will have a 30-year programme to renew all of their estates along the lines that Rich has described. We need that information and that understanding of all of our homes in order to be able to even begin the conversations about that work. The other thing that we need absolutely to do if we're to approach this kind of work is to be in constant communication with our residents and any such work needs to be resident-led. I've asked for an item on estate renewal to be brought to this committee. I think it may well be appropriate, but this is something that we look at either as a committee paper or as a task and finish report at some point. But it's something that we need to understand a lot better in order to be able to begin those conversations. I'm going to move us on now to the next item. But before that, I'm going to read out the recommendations of this report, which are: two, to note the Housing and Consumer Standards Programme Improvement Plan Summary; two, to note the Housing and Consumer Standards Programme Landlord Compliance Programme Backlog Performance Update. I'm amazed that I got through that sentence. To note the feedback from the recent housing scrutiny panel, housing forum and stakeholder engagement event; four, to note the role of the housing scrutiny panel to help the Homes and Housing Delivery Committee to hear the residents' voice within the Housing and Consumer Standards Programme Updates; and five, to note the update from the latest regulatory review meeting with the regulator of social housing. Can I ask the committee to note the report as per those recommendations? Thank you. Agenda item 10 is expansion of the joinery shop. This is a key decision as it involves a spend of over £500,000. Now, this report seeks approval to move and expand the joinery shop from its current location at Wellington Road Depot to a new larger premises that will allow for growth and increased capacity to meet demand and create a revenue stream for the housing revenue account. The paper also includes a review of relocation options. Additionally, the report asks the committee to approve the delegation of authority to the interim executive director of Growth and Regeneration in consultation with the Chair of the Homes and Housing Delivery Committee, to approve and award contract for terms in respect of any lease, in line with the maximum budget envelope outlined in this report. And I'd like to invite Craig Cook, Head of Repairs and Maintenance, to briefly outline the report.
Thank you, Chair, indeed. So I will come through some summary points of the report, assuming that you've read it, but please feel free to ask any questions at the end of the summary. So the expansion of the joinery shop from Wellington Road is a key priority due to some legislative changes. We've seen an acceleration required in development of some fire door installation programmes and replacement programmes, as well as some safety and constraint issues with Wellington Road, that site now, as well as a key priority around the redevelopment of Wellington Road, which has been approved following successful public consultation for the use of the site, either on an interim basis or permanent basis for an energy centre for our VAT and full partners for Almaresco. Because of that, we've been given a vacant possession request by summer 2025, although that can be flexible, dependent on our needs. HRA needs to find a suitable location and move, so it's not an order, but a friendly request to move by a certain time. So as the report suggests, there has identified two different premises, one being Sandy Park, the other being a commercially private rented premises. The report explores different opportunities there, as well as any of the other portfolio that Bristol owns, which has been extensively checked with our corporate team, and there is only Sandy Park that meets said requirement. So just a little bit about the current location. 1570 square metres is the current Wellington Road site. For the new premises to expand and meet new requirements, we're looking at a premises of 2,820 square metres. And the report goes into what the requirements would look like to make sure it's a benefit. So I won't dwell too much there. Excuse me. So looking at the different parts from Sandy Park, the benefits of Sandy Park is there is no rental loss to the private rented sector, so which would mean that any rental income can be reinvested back into Bristol activities or Bristol portfolio. It gives some financial security to the joinery shop because we can have a collaboration around long-term rent setting from internal conversations. It also centralises some services together as the repairs and maintenance team and some parking teams are based at Sandy Park currently. Some of the risks of the Sandy Park depot is that it's a grade-two listed building. It's a very tall interior, uninsulated roof for a particular part of the depot that we would be looking to move into. On estimations based on some soft market testing from my team, we would be looking at circa 1.4 million to redevelop that shed, as well as strengthening the floor, because for those who might know it, it's an old tram depot, built one still. So to build a factory inside it would need some strengthening works, as well as some free phase supplies. Also, really importantly, it's 20% smaller than our minimum requirement. That would then limit 20% revenue and productivity of any future aspirations to grow. Now, moving into the commercial rented premises, benefits and risks, it's a lower capital investment option. It would give us the ability to meet the summer 2025 exit as long as a suitable premises can be found. The benefits would be quicker due to a shorter implementation time, although some of the initial setup costs and rent costs would need to be negotiated with the landlord. Risks of that, then, conversely to Sandy Park, the rental opportunity is lost to the private rented sector. Finding a premises may be difficult and may delay the project. However, preliminary investigations have taken place and the business have started identifying suitable potential locations which meet the requirements. Another risk, though, is a volatile rental market in the private rented sector and that hopefully can be mitigated through the contractual terms from both parties. Financial appraisal of the solution is that there's 1.25 million already approved in last year's budget for the capital investment of the project. And the ongoing revenue costs will be offset against unit charges back through to the joinery shop manufacturer. And in the appended documents, there's a full financial model about contribution for each item that we produce at the joinery shop. The financial appraisal will look to buy new machinery to ensure that we produce much more efficiently and we can produce stores using CNC machinery, which would increase our productivity, which is all in the report. If you're interested and you probably have some questions. So I will continue down through to the office of recommendations. So move the joinery shop, excuse me. The office of recommendation is that the Housing and Homes Committee approves a proposal to move the joinery shop to the private rented sector and invest in new equipment, in line with the proposal set out in the report, and authorise the executive director of Growth and Regeneration in consultation with the Chair of the Homes and Housing Delivery Committee to approve the negotiation and award contract in terms of respect of any lease, in line with the maximum budget outlined within the report.
Thank you, Craig. Before we move to debate and discussion on this item, I'd just like to inform members that an amendment has been submitted for this item by councillor Lisa Stone from the Green Group. This has been circulated and published on the website along with the agenda papers. So what's going to happen is, first of all, we'll have the opportunity to provide comments, ask questions, debate the report as usual, and then we'll move on to discussing and voting on the amendment and the motion before us. Report recommendations before us. So can I ask who would like to kick off? So I'm going to go to, so I've got Jos and then, yeah, I'm going to go to Jos first.
Thank you. I don't need to declare this, but Sandy Park Depot is actually in my ward, as I'm sure most people know. And when I first looked at this, and I've spoken to Craig about it, it seemed a no-brainer to me to go to Sandy Park because we own the facility, but actually when you read the report, it's a no-brainer, we shouldn't do it, in my opinion. And it pains me to say it in a way because I'd love to have the joinery shop in Brizlington because I think Richard and I, we used, I can't remember Barry, we used that, you were there as well, weren't you? So the three of us came over for the lunchtime to sort of have a look round. And I have to say that it's the most uplifting, an extraordinary place. It was brilliant, absolutely brilliant. I thought, blimey, I'm being dragged into a blooming workshop, you know, a wood workshop. How, it's like going back to school. And I thought it was going to be pretty tedious, to be honest with you, but I find it absolutely fascinating. And the work that you do and your ability to react and be a completely reactive service, being proactive is fantastic, but your capacity to react to... being proactive is fantastic, but your capacity to react to, you know, when we've had a fire in a block or when something's happened and your guys can get on site and they can resolve the issue so that your residents, your tenants can go back into their properties as promptly as possible. And I think that was fantastic. But in terms of this report, as I said, much as it pains me, I just feel that Sandy Park is not an appropriate site. The fit out costs, the amount of retro, you know, particularly with the floor, et cetera, is just not the right place for it. And I'm sure there is going to be much more suitable accommodation within the city which is fit for purpose. And, you know, Sandy Park, we would be, you know, building within the old shed and, you know, it wouldn't be the best, would it? I mean, that's just really putting it out there, actually. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jos. Yeah, and I'd just like to add to some of what you said. I think we had the opportunity to visit the joinery shop at its current premises at Wellington Road and it was an uplifting experience, wasn't it? The work that the joinery shop does in providing bespoke joinery services across our, you know, across the housing, across our housing service, but also across the council and even beyond, is fantastic and they've been there since the 1950s, I believe. One of the most moving things I think I experienced there was we saw a door that the joinery shop had built that saved somebody's life. When there was a fire in one of our blocks, this solid fire door protected somebody in their flat until they were able to be rescued by the fire service. The door was on fire on the outside and on the inside of the flat, that person was safe. And it was, yeah, it was a moving experience, wasn't it? But yeah, I echo your comments as well, Jos. I think much as I would love for the joinery shop to be able to move to Sandy Park, I think this recommendation is the right one. I'm going to go to councillor Goggin next.
Yeah, just very briefly, again echoing yourself and councillor Clark's comments on the joinery team. I remember a couple of years ago when I was dealing with another housing matter, that I was told that the joinery team make, in the words of a beer manufacturer, probably the finest fire doors in the world. And, you know, it was high praise and as you say, saving people's lives and there was much demand, not just from within Bristol.
Thank you. Can I go to councillor Eddie and then councillor Stone?
As several colleagues have said, in my view, this is utterly the right decision. We were really impressed by the bills that we made about a month ago, particularly as the chairman has remarked, that the twelveth house store was really instructive. I remember saying to a member of staff, you ought to be really proud of what you're offering here, what your day job is. And for the reasons stated in Craig's report, clearly a move to actually Sandy Park, in my view, wouldn't be the right one. Firstly, it's not appropriate. It's going to be very difficult and planning heritage terms to convert and it would be expensive and it would be further delayed. We've heard there's regal room by the next summer move, but we're talking a couple of years down the line. So going for a commercially appropriate property seems correct. I'm conscious that councillor Stone's veto amendment, reading the officers' report in detail, in a way it seems she's pushing at an open door because the set standard is there is a five year break clause option. But what I have to just, with respect, I commented in the finance report earlier. I think this committee has a duty in view of the financial challenges we face to actually examine every single penny which may be expanded. And if, for example, the officers come back and say, we've been offered the best possible deal, but the break clause would be seven years or whatever. In my view, we ought to delegate it to the chairman in support with the officers to make a decision.
Thanks, Richard, and let's bear that in mind when we come to discussing the amendment. Councillor Stone, next.
Yeah, thank you, thank you councillor Eddie and thank you, Chair. When I was looking at this report, first of all, my main objective was to look at the numbers, okay? So I instantly went to, over five years, we're spending 1.5 million on commercial rent, okay? As compared to 230,000, sorry, I'm a hard head, right? Yeah, 230,000 pounds if we had it in our estate, okay? So if we're looking at a long term view, you know, not a five year gain, a long term view actually is more beneficial and that we have more revenue coming in over the long term if we keep the joining workshop in our estate, okay, yes? What my question really is, is that, I mean, I agree, you know, the commercial benefit of moving to, of the revenue, commercial benefit of the joining workshop, moving to a commercial estate is obviously beneficial because we can get it up and running really quickly in 1.8 of a year, 1.8 years, yeah, which is really important, especially having heard the importance of having the joinery workshop running as quickly as possible. So my question is, how much of that revenue can we take and actually, you know, invest in a, one of our commercial properties so that in, after the five year break clause, we could then move the joinery workshop back into our estate? This is not a fantasy thing about a five year break clause, this is not, oh, let's have a five year break, we hope. This is a planned action. In the five years, can we create in our state a situation where we can move the joinery workshop back into our state so we don't have to pay 1.5 million every five years on commercial rent?
Craig, do you want to?
Yeah, thank you. Some of that I might need to take away and get some finance slash legal response to. I'm not sure about the ring fenced account with the HRA and then where that money can be reinvested. And I'll have to double check to see if the surplus earned from the revenue then is saved to then be a solution to purchase a property, be it either investment in existing or purchase a new suitable premises. So can I take that away?
Okay, let's take that as an action. Okay. Councillor Thomas, next, and then councillor Clark. And then councillor.
It would be good to see a profit and loss for the business because I don't know whether we're supporting. I think clearly there's a huge amount of work in the area of fire doors at the moment. But I've got no sense of whether this is a business that actually makes money or not. And so the only clueing there is that when it looks at closing business as an option, it says loss profit 3.86 million, but there's no way of being able to look at what the cost benefit is in the context of how this business performs. So, you know, where and how can we see that?
Yeah, thank you. So there's a five year projection plan for the revenue, appendix, excuse me. There's lots of appendix. H, which shows us the contribution per item across all of the different items and based on total number of items manufactured times by increasing total size of joinery shop. And then there's some demands, projections around what that internal market looks like and then the potential opportunity for the external market.
Okay, my mistake.
And the profit growth based on those items as well. So if you need any more time after, I'm more than welcome, however that works, inside the governance to run through anything.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to Jos and then Sivs.
Thank you. And we're slightly straying on to the amendment. Having a five year break clause, the chances of, I think somebody made reference to the fact that the joinery shop's been in its current position since 1950s, 70 years in my estimation. The chances of us wanting to move up sticks, shift all that kit, which is going to be very expensive and not that easy to do within five years is unlikely. I mean, there is an opportunity, there may be an opportunity that if we find a site, we may be thinking that we might want to buy it. There may be an opportunity in the future to buy the site that we move to. So I think the five year break clause is kind of almost neither here nor there, to be honest with you. Because I think once you move that kit and you, because you're going to be investing in more kit with a bigger site, that you're, it's the costs of doing that are going to be quite big. And you're not going to be wanting to move around on anything like a regular basis. I would think you want to be there for the next 50 years. So go.
I've got Sivs next and then Jerome.
Thanks. Yeah, I think an approach of thinking about any surplus with the mindset of invest to grow in other assets is really amicable. It'd be worth just making sure that with whatever decision is made, that surplus is thought of as an opportunity to invest in current stock, either, you know, updating or maintaining or, you know, in any way, either for the purpose of the joinery shop or for the purpose of other stuff. But the invest to save element, I think, is pretty key. I like the projection of 20 plus apprenticeships. I think obviously we have quite a short skill deficit. However, within the construction industry, we also find a lack of diversity. So I'd like to see that the joinery makes sure that it has a very strong impact assessment and can fulfil and reflect society as opposed to reflecting the current industry. My question though was more on the basis that, as Jerome was saying, what is the current position of the joinery? And the growth, is that also based on the supply of, you know, the housing stock in itself and also external providers? So then it becomes really commercial. If it were to become super commercial, because it does look better than some of the spin outs that we have, could this then be seen as an additional spin out from local authority?
Thank you. So projections are based predominantly on internal opportunity. We are in demand within the repairs and maintenance service and we have to buy fire doors in for some projects, such as major block refurbishments. There's lots of opportunity for entrance doors for blocks of flats. There's huge opportunity for internal customers such as museums, landlords, pews, churches, bridges, such a wide plethora of things that the council does that we can maximise the internal opportunity. There is then absolutely, as you said, the commercialisation of the joinery shop that makes up a small percentage of this. However, the team receive weekly requests from housing associations with similar stock profiles in the city that are not standard sizes, where we've got conservation areas to do windows in specialist parts of the city and around surrounding cities. So it's, yeah, a lot of opportunity. You're right, as we progress into a commercialisation, we need to be mindful of the law around the public authority earning money and then that being replaced back into services so that is picked up in the finance and the legal reports. However, it is predominantly based on internalised, commercialised opportunities to do so.
Thanks, Craig. I've got Jerome.
So looking at the P and L on page 76, it's very, it's not clear what are actuals and what are forecasts. It says 22, 23, so, and then it says year one, two, three and four, with no sense of actually how has the business been financially performing over the last couple of years? And I'm concerned if the route forward is going with a 1.5 million a year commercial rent, all that's shown in this P and L is 300,000 rent and rates. So that will wipe out the, all the projected profit. So I don't really see, you know, what you're saying is let's invest in a business that isn't going to make any money. From what I can see from those numbers that have been presented at the moment. And I think that, I mean, you can come back on that, but that's very concerning and a very different proposition from the one that we were, you know, the one that we're looking at in terms of what the cost benefits are.
Yeah, absolutely. So I can answer some of it. We'll have a separate session to give you some assurance around that, the P and L of the actual operation. The surplus made in the 22, 23 region was 700,000, which has been reinvested or offset against some of the central recharges for the HI services. The point around the random utilities, 300,000 a year, per year, as we increase. I didn't quite pick up on the point around that then offsetting the.
The projected rent and rates is 300,000. The commercial rent, as I understood it from looking at the early numbers, is 1.5 million.
No, that's over five years.
That's over five years, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
But more than happy to go through in more detail.
Okay, so do we have any later numbers in 22, 23?
Not in this report, but yeah, we absolutely do have more later numbers I can provide.
Okay, was the net profit at that level?
Again, I don't have it in front of me, so I wouldn't want to give numbers out and it'd be incorrect.
Okay.
Can we make sure that we provide that later on? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other hands. Is there anything anyone else would like to say before we move on to the recommendations and the amendments? So there'll be more opportunities to debate when we discuss the amendments.
Sorry, Chair, is it possible to hear from Paul about his thoughts on the report?
Sorry, what's the question?
Is it possible to hear from Paul, Paul Martin?
On what in particular?
On the report, on the joinery report.
So general comments?
Yeah, general comments.
Paul, do you have any general comments you'd like to make?
I'm sorry to disappoint you, but I don't.
All right, thank you. Okay. So we're going to move on now to the decision making part of this item. So I'm going to read out the recommendations of the report first of all. So those are, number one, to move the joinery shop to private rented premises and invest in new equipment in line with the proposal set out in the report. Number two, to authorise the Executive Director of Growth and Regeneration in consultation with the Chair of the Homes and Housing Delivery Committee to approve negotiation and award contract for terms in respect of any lease in line with maximum budget envelopes outlined in this report. I move those report recommendations. Can I have a second there? A second if I, councillor Eddie, thank you. Okay. So as I said earlier, we've received an amendment to this report from councillor Lisa Stone. And so the amendment should be shown on the screen. I can't see the screen, so I'm assuming it's out there. And so the amendment is to add the red text to recommendation number one. So recommendation one would then read, move the joinery shop to private rented premises and invest in new equipment in line with the proposal set out in the report to ensure that the lease has a break clause after five years and conduct a strategic review of Sandy Park with the option to return the joinery shop back into the Bristol City Council owned estate. Can I ask councillor Stone to move that amendment?
Do I just say, I move the amendment? I move the amendment.
Great. And can I have a second there, seconded by councillor Goggin? Thank you. Okay. So now there's an opportunity to debate the amendment itself. I'd like to kick off the debate on this myself, if that's all right, by just saying that having discussed this with officers, I've discussed it with Craig and with Fiona, I can confirm that this is supported by officers, it's supported by the service. From my point of view, I think I'd like to say that this whole item is a good news story, right? You know, this is taking the opportunity of the need to move from Wellington Road to new premises to imagine a. imagine a, a, a future for the joinery shop, which means that we'll be able to, uh, offer more employment, more apprenticeships, um, we'll, we'll help people to, to get a trade, we'll, you know, um, set them up for life. Um, and we're going to be, um, having the opportunity to, to fulfil those, those commercial opportunities within and potentially beyond the council that Craig's talked about. Um, and in that context, I think this, this amendment is, um, is intended to bring out some of the, uh, uh, some of the work that's in the report, but, but wasn't originally one of the, one of the recommendations. Um, and in particular, um, it, uh, it really sort of gives us the opportunity to look at, um, to look at Sandy Park, um, which is a fantastic facility with great heritage value. Um, but, uh, as, as I've heard from, uh, from staff and from unions, uh, there are, you know, there are, there are problems there with the, the conditions that people work in. Um, there are, you know, there are limitations to it. We need to work out what we're going to do with that, with that site. Um, and they, they, I'm sure there's an opportunity for, for some really exciting uses for, for Sandy Park in the future. Um, that said, I'd like to open up a debate on the amendment. So I'm going to go to councillor Eddie first.
I haven't actually appointed councillor Clark as my substitute here on earth, but actually what she said many ago, I thoroughly agree with and said to you. My view is the officer recommendation leaves the exact terms of the ultimate successful negotiation in your hands with the officers. I'm happy with that. I really don't think we want to die their hands by talking of break laws and definitely five years, in which case I don't believe in a million years we'll be looking for actually, uh, a move.
Thanks, Richard. I've got councillor Clark.
Of course, you'd expect me to speak on this one with, with respect to, um, Sandy Park. So it's, this, this amendment, the break's down into three sections. Um, the first bit is around a break clause of five years, as I think we've, um, discussed earlier, the, the likelihood of us, I mean, that's pretty standard text anyway, so I don't think it's particularly controversial, but the, the chances of us wanting to leave that premises, because if the fit-out costs are going to be quite extensive, within five years are probably fairly limited. Um, a review of Sandy Park, well, um, there's no great surprise here. We've been having conversations around Sandy Park, Sandy Park Depot for many, a long year, uh, because the opportunity is, is a huge site, massive site, but of course you've got a listing on the, 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 the walls, et cetera. And of course you've got the, uh, sort of Danocles with a road, potentially, and I don't think there's a lot we can do with that site until we know what's going to happen with a potential road going down the side, one side by Churchill Road. Um, so I think there's nothing wrong, um, in, in having another look at Sandy Park. If that is the, um, if that's the will of the group, then that's fine. And I would, obviously my councillor colleague, Andrew Varney, and I would be very much en- enthusiastic to get involved in any conversations. Um, and I think probably within the text, it's implying, I don't know, I may be wrong, uh, councillor Stone, but the in, in, inference is that possibly the joinery shop could in future go into Sandy Park, but I kind of feel that that's, that ship has maybe sailed because the fit-out cost, because of the, the floor in the, uh, would probably make it unviable i- in the future, unless you wanted to build another, another premises on a, where the car park is or, you know, whatever. Anyway, so, um, that's my, my views for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thanks, Jos. Um, can I go to councillor Stone next?
Yeah, well, thanks very much, councillor Carl. Yeah, um, the original amendment did have actually in there not just, uh, to, uh, return the joinery workshop back into, uh, but it was just to make it, um, a little bit more succinct. The initial premise of this was to review Sandy Park because we wanted to obviously make as much commercial value of our stock as possible, so try and create some kind of revenue where we can. Um, and the option really where the joinery workshop was, was concerned, the, the, the strategy would be within this five year, over this five-year period, because it is just, it's just, hopefully the plan is a strategic plan to view whatever, there are other premises, I'm, I'm sure within our stock, that we possibly could bring the joinery workshop back into the estate. And again, the reasons why I'm asking about this is because one-point-five million pounds over five years, I think is quite extortionate. We do not have any control of commercial value rates, rented rates. We don't know how much that money, you know, rate, rate, commercial value rate's going to go up over the next five years. We have no control over that. So although the fit-out costs, et cetera, et cetera, are, yeah, I agree, expensive, if there is any possibility that we could find alternative stock or buy, uh, alternative premises to bring this, um, valuable, um, joinery workshop back into our estate, then I would really be focusing on that. So we can, it's like invest to save, isn't it? You know, it's the, it's the buzzword for nine. So that was the idea really, not necessarily to bring it back into Sandy Park, okay?
Thanks, please. Um, do I have anyone else who'd like to speak on the amendment before we move to a vote? I'm not seeing it. Um, so, yeah, I, I think, um, I, I'm supportive of this amendment. As I said, uh, officers are supportive as well. I think this, um, I think this gives us some accountability over things that, that the service is keen to do anyway, um, and so that we can make sure that, um, that we are, that we're making the best use, um, not only of, uh, of the, the commercial opportunities for the joinery shop, but also best use of our own estate, um, and our own assets. So, uh, so I'll be voting for it. Um, so I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna move to a vote now. Um, and I'm gonna ask members to clearly indicate your vote by raising your hand. Uh, first of all, can I have votes for the amendment? Okay, I can't see it. Thank you. Can you lower your hands, please? Um, and then, uh, votes against the amendment? Uh, so that's two. Um, and there are, uh, and there are no extensions, uh, because that's everyone accounted for. Um, so, just, uh, again, do you want me to confirm? Yeah. Uh, so, so that vote's carried. Uh, so, uh, so now that means that the, uh, that the substantive motion, uh, we'll read, um, is up on the screen, including the red text. Um, would anyone like to make any further comments before we move to a vote on the substantive motion? Councillor Thomas? Yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah, it's not. Um, would you like to re-, to repeat that for the, for the, sorry, I'm just saying that this is a very successful business, by the looks of it, with a very healthy-looking, forward-looking profit, um, and potentially it could be considered to be, to be sold at some stage to help fill the gap in the council's finances, but that doesn't stop us making the decision to support this successful business. Thank you very much. Um, so, uh, I've got, uh, I've got a hand from Lisa.
Yeah, uh, I'd like to just counter-argue, uh, that point, uh, councillor Thomas, because it, because it is a successful business, doesn't necessarily have to sell it, you know, at the end of the day. So I just wanted to make that point. Like, I don't want that to be the last point to be made, because it's a, you know, successful business. Again, we want revenue to come in, we want long-term revenue, we want to support our trades and we want to make sure that we have, you know, sustainable, kind of like, um, you know, I don't know, um, apprenticeships, et cetera, et cetera. So much benefit to this in our, to be left in our council. Thanks.
Got a hand from councillor Clark.
I don't want to prolong this, because I don't want to prolong it, but all I'm saying, I totally agree with you, becau-, because the, one of the reasons that this is a successful business is because it's our business, it's within our gift. And, you know, I talked about it earlier on, if you had a, an incident happened on a Friday night, your guys would turn out on Saturday to make the doors so that those people could go back into their homes on Sunday morning or whatever. They can be completely reactive. If we sold that business, we would lose all of that and more, and probably the price would go up. Because you are, I, I suggest you're probably doing, turning your, um, I mean, it's all bespoke stuff, isn't it? We've got odd-shaped windows, we've got odd-shaped doors, and that, that actually commands a high price within the commercial market. So selling it, or even considering selling it, would be completely retrograde, and that's what makes this business right for this city. But thank you.
Thanks very much, everybody. Um, we've had a really lively debate on, on what I think is a really positive, uh, story, um, and, uh, and a real opportunity. Um, so I'm going to move us to, to a vote on the, on the, uh, amended recommendations now. Um, I'm going to read them out again just for clarity. Uh, so, the recommendations are to move the joinery shop to private rented premises and invest in new equipment in line with the proposals set out in the report, to ensure that the lease has a break clause after five years, and conduct a strategic review of Sandy Park with the option to return the joinery shop back into the Bristol City Council-owned estate. And two, to authorise the executive director of growth and regeneration in consultation with the chair of the Homes and Housing Delivery Committee, to approve negotiation and award contract for terms in respect of any lease, in line with maximum budget envelopes outlined in this report. Um, again, I'm going to take a vote and I'm going to ask members to indicate your, your vote clearly by hand. Can I ask for votes for the, the recommendations? Uh, and can I confirm that that's unanimous? Yeah. So, uh, so that's carried. Thank you, everybody. Uh, and that concludes agenda item ten. So we're going to move on to our final agenda item now, which is, uh, eleven, uh, and that's the strategic housing review. Uh, now the purpose of this report is to present findings and recommendations from an external, independent review of the senior structure of the Homes and Landlord Services Division. Uh, the report's seeking the committee's views on the housing challenges facing the council and its potential responses. These cover actions to make improvements in, amongst other things, ways of working and culture that, combined with organisational change, will better enable the council to meet its housing responsibilities as a landlord and as a statutory housing authority. Uh, and I'm gonna invite Paul Martin, uh, interim chief executive, to briefly outline the report. And Paul?
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, the context for the report, as you just said, is to enable members to discuss and respond to the independent, uh, report from a subject matter expert in housing, sitting on my left, Michael Scora, um, who is here to answer members' uh, uh, questions later. Mr. Scora's review was, um, adjourned me-commissioned by the chief executive and the executive director of growth and regeneration to provide a comprehensive analysis of the current structure and capacity of the council's housing services alongside its challenges and its improvement journey. Um, and what you have in the paperwork here is Mr. Scora's high-level findings. He's also providing more detailed, uh, sort of operational analyses, uh, uh, for officers to work through. And I want to take the opportunity, Chair, if I can, to thank Mr. Scora for his work, which I think is timely and important, um, and, and it's really been undertaken in an exemplary way, working closely with our, uh, officer team, who I know have enjoyed working with you, Michael. The, the particular reason for my attendance at this morning's meeting is the recommendation that the council should create a standalone directorate for housing services headed by, um, a, a dedicated executive director. And so for clarity for members, uh, what that would mean in practice is that housing services would no longer be located within the much wider growth and regeneration directorate, but would stand alone with an executive director as a peer of the three, um, existing executive directors. In other words, growth and regeneration, children's and education, and adult social services and communities. Now, in the council's constitution, these organisational issues of sort of management structure are delegated to the chief executive. Um, and in recent years, the direction of travel in Bristol and in other places has been towards a smaller number of sometimes multi-hatted executive directors. And so in this sense, the report is, um, sort of running contrary to a trend in recent years. And I think it requires a sort of a, 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 an explanation and justification as to why we think, um, uh, we conclude it's important to have a separate department. Um, I'm, I'm minded to agree with Mr. Scora's recommendations and approve the creation of a new housing services directorate, which would be headed by an executive director, um, who would be appointed following open competition, um, and mindful that the new permanent chief executive, Nick Hibbert, starts, uh, here in City Hall in the new year. Um, I've also taken the opportunity, Chair, to discuss this issue with him, uh, to, uh, understand his perspective as the, uh, as, as the incoming permanent chief executive. And he fully agrees, he's read Mr. Scora's report, agrees with its analysis and supports the recommendation. Having said all of that, um, I'll be strongly guided by the feedback that the committee's about to provide here now, um, uh, 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 and, and your response, uh, this, this afternoon. So I think that, 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 that Mr. Scora is, is right, that the current issues and challenges facing housing services nationally, actually, many driven than, driven by, 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 by national government and the national agenda, but also locally here in Bristol, are of such a magnitude and complexity that they require full-time, uh, dedicated professional leadership. I want, I want to say that I do think that John Smith, the, uh, uh, executive director for regeneration and growth, and his senior colleagues, some of whom are here, are doing a commendable job, um, uh, in their stewardship of housing currently. Uh, but I think at the executive director level in particular, the inevitable juggling of housing with numerous other competing responsibilities, um, in growth and regeneration, means that the time and the capacity, uh, uh, is simply not commensurate with the demands of the council. And these demands, as you know, in the committee, you've touched on a number of them today, they range from the urgently to improve building safety, to strengthening our landlord services, uh, uh, and, uh, including our, uh, uh, repairs and maintenance service, uh, our relationships, um, with, uh, council tenants, the need to build more affordable and social housing units, um, uh, tackling the growing homelessness and temporary accommodation pressures in the city, and indeed the, um, estate regeneration, uh, 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 opportunities, which you referred to earlier in this meeting, Chair. So I'd like to see a, a, a new executive director of housing, uh, working closely with colleagues, their, their, their peers in children's and adult social services, to ensure that vulnerable, um, children, families and adults are effectively supported in their housing needs. And I think in my time in Bristol, I can see that some of the most significant financial pressures that we face in other departments, um, are directly attributable to housing pressures. Um, uh, uh, and, and, and they may emerge, for example, notably in children's services, uh, but they are fundamentally housing, um, issues. And we need to, uh, apply imagination and creativity in identifying solutions and draw on the best work that has happened, not just in Bristol, but nationally, um, in local authorities across the country. So in conclusion, Chair, um, uh, I, I, I'll say that I think this is an important paper and one that we can take as a roadmap to strengthen and build on all the good work that's taken place already. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. Um, Anna, I'd just like to say, um, that a home is the foundation for a, a healthy life, for, um, for opportunity, uh, for the ability to live, um, in, uh, to live in, in our, in our communities, um, and to, and to really take, take advantage of all the opportunities that our city has to offer. Um, without a decent home, uh, our, our citizens cannot thrive. Um, and I think that it's a, it's a sign of our, of our commitment to our residents, uh, to the, to the importance that we place on providing decent homes for the, uh, the many thousands of, of people who live in our council-owned homes, uh, who are, who are leaseholders, uh, the, um, the, the many hundreds of, of households who, who live in, in temporary accommodation currently in Bristol, who are, who are homeless, uh, to, to everyone who, uh, whose housing is... Uh, to, to everyone who, uh, whose housing is unstable, is uncertain, who is, uh, unable to access housing at all, um, the people we have living rough on our streets, uh, in, um, living in, in vehicles. Um, we owe a, a responsibility of, of care and nurture to, to everyone who lives in our city and, and, um, and a home is the basis for all of that. Um, and I think it's, I think it's absolutely right that we should be, um, that we should be prioritizing the, the homes that we provide, um, and the homes that we don't yet provide. Um, by really strengthening the ability that we have, um, through the, through the recommendations that, that, uh, that we have in this report. So I'm going to go to, to councillor Clark first.
Thank you.
To councillor Goggan.
Uh, thank you, Paul, for your presentation. Um, although, um, it, it's never a great idea in these financial conditions to be promoting, um, employing more expensive staff. I mean, I'm, I'm, um, I'm not being detrimental in that, but you know, we don't want to be, um, it, um, investing in posts that we don't feel we need. When I came into this committee this year and read the reports, I was, um, quite horrified by the position that I think that this committee finds itself in with the state of the housing stock in Bristol. Um, the voids, the repairs, the number of days it takes to get a repair, all the stuff that we all know from this committee. And what I'm saying is there is a huge piece of work to be done here. And I think you're absolutely right in identifying that we need somebody to lead that. And to lead it from, um, the appropriate level within the structure of the, of the council. Um, I'm fully behind us doing this, um, because I do feel that, um, this department has its, I mean, I hate the word, we're on a journey and we need to flip in, we need to get on with it and we have, we are, in, in some respects, we are failing our tenants at the moment. Um, and unless we get on and get somebody in position who can really embrace the agenda. Then I don't think we're going to get on with it fast enough and hard enough. So thank you. I'm fully in favour. Thank you.
Um, I'm going to go to councillor Goggan and then councillor Eddy.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, and again, I'd like to echo, um, councillor Parsons and councillor Clark's comments. I'm totally in, in favour of this. And you could do a lot worse than somebody sitting on that top table.
I wouldn't have imagined that you would. Uh, and councillor Eddy next.
Firstly, can I thank the chief exec for commissioning this important report? And also for having the courtesy to seek our views. We know legally it's your job as head paid service with your successor to go forward, of course. Can I also thank you and also Mr. Michael Scora for actually being so patient and sitting here for two hours? In truth, of course, this policy committee's deliberations are far more interesting than for the council. So you're better off here. Uh, seriously, it gladdens the heart to receive this report. And can I thank Michael for actually his detailed and knowledgeable, uh, report. I mean, makes fascinating reading, also echoes what I, uh, really passionately feel. All my political life here in this chamber, I really majored in planning regeneration and housing. And this seems absolutely to fit the bill. Um, this authority, this administration, I believe, view the housing crisis as Bristol's number one woe. And I think it deserves actually a dedicated standalone exec director. So that would be the way I would go. And then you're also proposing very sensibly, uh, uh, very much, um, phased implementation, right, for that big bang approach. And that's very welcome, is unsensible, of course. Finally, just one reference. Uh, Michael, I noticed, uh, his wording is far more measured than my own. How could it be not quite as colourful? I have previously alluded to Bristol City Council treating his, its council tenants like medieval serfs. Um, now, he might have raised it somewhat different, well, in fact, he did. But I do believe we do have a real courtward journey to go on. So hopefully the new exec director can take us on that journey.
Uh, I've got councillor Stone next, uh, and then councillor Chaddell.
Yeah, no, I, I think I'm just going to repeat what somebody said, so I'll be very succinct and to the point. Um, as long as we can have assurances that the, the new executive director can give us assurances that they're outcome focused. Um, you know, that we are going, and, and they're accountable for the delivery or, uh, we get, I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, we need a strategic approach. Because we cannot continue going down with a, I know, an ad hoc approach from what I can see that we're, we're, we're delivering or, or, uh, at, at the moment. So yeah, I'm very much in favour of the recommendations.
Um, we've got Sid next?
Yes, thanks. Thanks for the report and, uh, thanks for the work done. Um, my question is more in line with the, the, the first part of the theme where this, um, I think it was 2.3 million for new, new staff. Uh, that's aiming to obviously support with the regulation. Um, what I'm trying to, and, and also the, the last time we spoke, uh, Fiona, you mentioned about the report that was done around housing offices. Uh, making sure that they are visit, they are visible and the caseload that they have, so that it's quite clear why they should be visible and why, where they would be if they're not necessarily visible. So in all of this, uh, um, estate approach, I think, and the data, um, uh, approach that you mentioned earlier, um, uh, Richard. I'm trying to better understand the level of demand based on the new staff that's coming. Uh, the strain in which the leadership has, has been in over the last few years with the targets that has been set. In terms of the leadership, the management, the supervision, um, and the team in the delivery. And where then the, the new directorship would actually then fall in place to make sure that, um, the whole line of housing, uh, is actually then more visible and, and able to deliver with the demand. Or are we saying that the demand is actually so high, that's why we need so many staff? Um, but yet we don't necessarily have all the full data to know if the demand is so high, right? Um, however, I mean, I, I'm in full support of, uh, this being separate. I just want to understand the level of strain that is there. Um, so we really understand what's the level of capacity that's needed to address, um, some of these issues. Both in terms of, you know, the call centre, the leadership, would there be more staff that's required alongside of it? Or do we feel that we're now at, you know, with this new role, wo- would we now be at the capacity that we need to deliver?
Do you want me to respond to that, Chair? Uh, 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 would you, do you want to invite councillor Thomas first? Uh, no, okay. So, um, well, what I would say so far is it's very heartening to hear, uh, uh, members' reactions to, um, uh, this report and recommendation. Um, I'm very appreciative of that. I think it's very important as well, uh, that the, our colleagues in housing and also, um, you know, potentially as we get into a search for the executive director, uh, role, um, that the external, um, world knows that, um, Bristol is united behind the proposal. I think that's extremely helpful. Um, and that, uh, people who are considering joining Bristol City Council in its housing services know, um, what a priority the council places on, on, on housing, uh, and particularly through this committee. I think that, that, um, that will come through, uh, i- in the way that people see the future of, of housing and a career in Bristol City Council. So, thank you for that. In relation to the visibility point, and, um, I suppose what I just heard in that last question was, uh, a question about visibility and impact, I think is what you were describing and the importance of that. Uh, 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 my belief is that visibility and accountability needs to be in place at every level of the organisation. Um, uh, uh, the leadership level all the way through to, um, housing estates. Um, and, uh, visibility and accessibility is a crucial principle in local government. And the reason that we have local government and, um, uh, 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 is in order that, uh, e- elected officials like yourselves, um, can be accountable to the electorate. Um, and, uh, the officers can be both responsible to yourselves, um, uh, and to the, uh, the people who pay their wages. Um, in this case, residents and tenants. So, um, I think, uh, uh, it's essential to emphasize that that accountability and visibility in a dedicated executive director would be there within the council, within City Hall. Um, in this committee and externally, um, uh, with residents and tenants and stakeholders. Um, and, and that that should be, um, exemplified throughout the department. One individual or even a few individuals can't do this on their own. Um, it needs to be the work of, um, a total department. And, uh, that's what we mean by culture, really. Um, and in a, in effective organisational culture. Uh, and Michael may want to comment on this. In effective organisational culture, the behaviours, um, that are set by members and by the leaders of the organisation, um, are exhibited throughout the service and throughout the staff. That takes time to de- uh, to develop, um, uh, but it starts at the top. And I think, um, it's one of the reasons that this is an important paper. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you for committee for inviting me and for reading my report. Just on, on, on this last point, um, both the Grenville reports, the, the, the inquiry reports that, that were finally published in the summer and the work of the local, of the housing ambassadors, both, both really point to this vital question about the relationship with tenants and of course, in the case of Grenville, how that had broken down. Um, I provided a, a full report to both the chief executive and the executive director for growth and regeneration. And I pick up this really vital point about, um, visibility, accountability. As the chief executive says, running throughout the organisation. One of the points I make in the report about culture is that it, there has to be a sense of people across the council working together on the same things that really matter. And I think it's helped, the view that I came to was that it's not quite right at the moment, but I really think it's helped by having an executive director who sits in the top team. Um, and can really cement that sense of the, the housing services being part of the council in a, in a more seamless way. Um, or in a, in a seamless way as possible. Chair, could I ask your indulgence just to say three, three things which I would like to say for the purpose of, um, the committee hearing? Number one is, I wanted to, I want to thank the officers and members that I spoke to um, during the course of about six months putting this report together. It's been very detailed and I'd be, I'm very grateful for the open way in which people gave me answers. And it was very honest and candid and I think that was necessary and really helped me get to where I've got to. I have made the point that, um, except for where people were all, were both officers or members and residents. I didn't speak to residents, that wasn't within my scope. But I've also made the point, I think that's important for the future. The second, second thing I want to say is that, look, quite understandably and quite rightly, this committee has heard about and knows about from today and previous meetings about the, the challenges and the housing crisis. But my report ultimately is intended to, to inspire and encourage the council to take this opportunity that, 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 again, referring back to the Grenville inquiry report. Um, sees this really as a landmark timing housing to make the changes that are, that are necessary. The council is not just a landlord, of course, it's a, you, you said in your introduction, Chair, it's a statutory housing authority. But of course, it's a council, it does all the other things as well. And both the chief executive and I have said in the, in the report. It's vital for children in their early years, it's vital for older people staying independent and keeping well, and it's a vital part of public health. And lastly, I want to say that, that, you know, whilst there are, there are a lot of challenges. And, and there are lots of things to do and sometimes that can seem like a negative comment. But I really want to end by saying, I, I've also seen some fantastic, uh, professional leadership here. Really great collaborative working, uh, so, a, a genuine commitment and desire to do well for Bristol and the people of Bristol. So, uh, there's some good starts, some good things underway, a lot to do. And I think the, the structure and the other changes around culture, um, governance, uh, the ways of working that are set out in the report. I, I think will create the right conditions for success and I, uh, very much, um, grateful for your reading and discussing of the report.
Thank you, Michael. Um, do you want anything else to say? Thank you. Um, I'm just wondering what the, the likely timescale would be if this is approved? And how it also links with looking at the overall organisational structure of the, of the housing function? And whether some of that will be done before an appointment or at the same time as appointment, or whether it would follow?
It's a really interesting question. Uh, thank you. Michael's, um, done some work on structures, um, uh, uh, could underpin, uh, the executive director post and the creation of new department. Um, I think it's probably helpful if, uh, the person who's appointed has the opportunity to review that. Um, and consider for themselves, um, you know, uh, uh, they might have their own views, come with their own perspectives. So I think that they will, um, inherit a body of work which will guide them. And, uh, rather than start putting that in place before somebody is appointed, it might be a good idea for them to have the opportunity to just review it. But I, I think it will be immensely helpful to have, to have this and it will mean they can get on with the work quickly. Um, so in timing terms, uh, I think, you know, well, I appreciate people are probably impatient for progress, understandably, but we probably should allow six to nine months from the point of initiating um, a competition through to the point when an individual takes up post. Of course, it depends who they are and their circumstances. Uh, but I wouldn't expect this to, um, actually take effect until the summer of 2025.
Did I see a hand from you?
No.
Okay, okay. Um, thank you very much, uh, Paul and Michael. Um, I, uh, I think this is, uh, as, as you said, Michael, this, you know, this is a historic moment, I think, in the, um, in councils. Uh, a, a really kind of approach to, to our homes. Um, I think when, um, hopefully when, uh, when a new executive director is appointed, they'll have the opportunity to, to be sort of, um, to look at, look at the rest of, of the structure that we have, um, to identify areas where we need extra capacity. I mean, I think I would personally identify, um, finance capacity as, as somewhere where we need, um, we need to improve. Um, and, and safety as well. I think sort of transforming our whole approach to safety is something that I think I, I would welcome. Um, I would welcome changes there. And as, and as has been said, I think, um, the way that we engage with residents, I think for, for too long councils have seen, seen residents through, through a rather sort of patriarchal lens. Um, as, as people that we, um, that we provide services for, that, that don't necessarily have much of a say in, in how those services are run and structured. Um, and I think we need to be, we And I think we need to be, we need to be much more standing alongside people and really kind of involving residents, citizens, at every possible level, at every possible opportunity, through, you know, a range of forums, through transactional relationships, you know, people should be able to have their say about everything that we do, whether they're commenting on a repair, or whether they're coming to a session like this, we should be open and responsive and listening. I'd really like to commend Michael and everyone who's been involved in preparing this report, I think it's really rich. I've read it and reread it several times myself, and I'd really recommend that members of the committee do the same, because it's, there's an awful lot in there, I think, for us to reflect on and hopefully to kind of bring into our work as we go forward. Thank you very much, everybody. Come to the end of that, I assume, so I would just like to ask the committee to note the recommendations, I'm going to read the recommendations from the report. So these are to note the strategic housing review report, appendix A, to note that the feedback from the committee will be considered by the chief executive and taken into account in implementing the recommendations arising from the review. We have discussed and commented on the specific proposal that the chief executive is minded to create a housing department and an executive director of housing, and we have discussed and commented on the proposal for a phased approach to implementation of changes arising from the strategic review of housing in appendix A. I'd also like the committee to note that a report will be brought back to the committee to update it on progress in relation to matters in this report in due course, and we've heard about the expected timescales for that. So can I ask the committee to note the report as per the recommendations? Thank you very much. Well, I'd like to thank everybody for their attendance, particularly members of the press and those in the public gallery who've stayed the whole time. I think, we don't generally have an AOB section, but I think Paul had something that he wanted to say before we all go.
Yeah, it's just very brief, and there has been a certain amount of consternation recently about decisions made in the policy committee chair's briefings. And I was just wondering, in terms of clarity and transparency, if, like the transport committee, you may wish to invite the lead member from the other two parties to attend those chairs briefing?
I'll take that, yeah, I'll take that away, consider it, thank you. So thank you very much, everybody. Thanks to these two officers, thanks to the members, and thanks, as I said, to the press and public for attending. The next meeting of this committee is going to be Friday the 13th of December at 10am in the City Board Council chamber, thank you very much. The meeting's adjourned.